I hope it's not be discussed this, this time around. CMI.
Speaker, that item?
I was, if you guys pick it up.
You want to speak on the item, then be sure to sign up on the clipboard, that's Agenda Item. Erica, can help you.
I already signed up, but I understand that you're not going to pick it up. We're not deferring.
It's not deferring. But Vince, if you want to speak at the Agenda Item, then you sign up on the yellow clipboard.
Mayor, Mayor, and Item Three, I was going to give an update on, during Agenda and Order of Business, I was going to give an update on that item.
Okay, is that?
The CMI.
Okay. All right. Or we'll let him speak anyway. Okay. Yes. He wants to speak on, I guess, in the, yeah. Okay, again, for any of you that just arrived, I want to remind you, if you'd like to speak at the meeting, please be sure to sign up at the podium before the meeting. If you'd like to speak at open forum or an Agenda Item, thank you. Can you remind me, Erica, sometimes when we get to that, I forget that we have someone for the agenda? Thank you. Are we ready to go, Erica? Okay. Call the roll, please.
Mayor Mitchell?
Here.
Vice Mayor Fahad? Councilman Santin?
Here.
Councilwoman Bravo?
Here.
Councilman Vasquez?
Here.
There is a quorum present.
Please stand if you are able for the invocation by Dr. Vasquez.
Father in heaven, we ask for your wisdom as we begin this meeting. We acknowledge that we need your wisdom and insights, and we welcome your presence among us. Guide us in our discussions and decisions, helping us to seek what is best for all involved. We trust in your perfect wisdom and ask that you direct our meeting according to your will. In James, Chapter One, Verse Five, it says, "If any of you lacks wisdom, let him ask God, who gives generously to all without reproach, and it will be given to him." We claim this promise as we start our meeting and trust in your provision. Thank you for being with us always. Amen.
Please join us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge of Allegiance, salute flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, individual with liberty and justice for all.
Welcome, everyone, to our June 10th regular council meeting. It's great to see so many friendly faces in the audience. And for those of you that are joining us virtually, welcome to you too. Thanks for joining us. We'll get started with the awards and presentations.
Mayor, I'm sorry, under Item Three, Agenda, Order of Business?
Yes, sir.
I just wanted to give an update on 12A. I don't have a contract yet. It's still being, I'm still working on it with, with legal. I know it's been four years since the contract has expired. I don't know why it's taken this long, but by next meeting, I'll have it on. I just don't have it today. And I just want to make sure when I present it to you, it's perfect.
Okay, Councilman Santin, you still wish to discuss?
So legal has the contract now?
Yeah, legal, we're, we're working on that right now.
And the only reason I'm asking is because we have some people signed up to speak on the Agenda Item. So they could speak during upland forums, so they don't have to stay if we're not going to go to it. So we can move them to open forum.
I think I'm going to, I'd like this to go straight to the contract. So we'll defer it to the next meeting. If they can switch to the open forum, if they want to say some things, I think it'll be ideal since they're here.
All right, and then I'll ask the, those that are signed up to speak during that Agenda Item, since we won't have them, I'll call you up during open forum, which will be earlier. And that way, you don't have to stay through the whole meeting. Unless you'd like to, we love to have, we love to look out on faces in the audience. Okay, and also, the other thing is, Councilwoman Bravo asked me to move Agenda Item 12, let's see, 12E up to the front, so we'll be doing that one. What is it, 12? It's the one on the golf carts. Oh, I'm looking at the, not the revised. Yes, 12F, we'll move it up to, to the start of the Item 12 agendas, unless anyone has any concerns. No, just under Other Business, but it'll be the first item under Other Business. Okay, thank you. All right, so let's move to awards and presentations. And we are very, we have the pleasure tonight of recognizing the winners of the Miami Springs Virginia Gardens Optimist Club South Florida District Essay Winner, Gabrielle Vivas Rievera? Am I pronouncing that right? And the South Florida Regional Oratorical, Oratorical Winner, Janessa Maria Montilla. And are both Janessa and Gabrielle here tonight? Okay, wonderful, congratulations. We're very, very proud of you. We'd like to invite the Optimist Club President, Jim Bulmer, to speak. Bolton, excuse me.
That's okay. It's been a long weekend, it's only Monday night. Good evening, Mayor, good evening, Vice Mayor Fahad, good evening, Councilmen and Councilwoman, J.C., Tammy. So I'm, I'm here proudly today as President of the Optimist Club. Our, we, we solicit essays and oratorical from youth in the community that they get to compete against other youth. And regionally, these two individuals have won for our district. So I would like to, if we have the time, have Gabriel do his essay and have Janessa do her oratorical. So let me start with Gabriel. Gabriel Vivas is seventeen years old. He was born in Cuba, he moved here when he was sixteen, so he's been here for about a year and a half. He lived in Spain for nine years, so prior to moving over to the U.S. And he came here to learn English, and he's been prepping for his SATs. He earned the Bright Futures Scholarship, and he's looking forward to completing a medical degree in the U.S. and studying, being a biological science major. So with that being said, let me let Gabriel come up and present his essay that he won. At the, at the end, if we can do a photo op with everybody, the Optimist Club is also presenting each of them, our local Optimist Club is presenting each of them with a $500 check for being the winners. So let me, with that further ado, let me let Gabriel come up and, and present his essay.
Welcome, Gabriel.
Thank you so much, first and foremost, thank you for being here. And, afternoon. I'm going, sorry for my English, first of all, if I don't pronounce too well the, the words, but I'm going to start with my essay for.
Be closer to the mic.
For which?
Move the mic closer.
This has been recorded, so yes. For which the main theme was, what is the optimism? And how like it works in our lives and how it improves our lives. So optimism is a powerful force that not only shapes our individual outlook on life, but also influences how we connect with others and the world around us. It serves as a beacon of hope, guiding us through adversity and fostering resilience in the face of challenges. This essay delves into the profound connection fostered by optimism, exploring its impact on personal growth, relationships, and broader societal cohesion. At its core, optimism is the belief in the inherent goodness of life and the expectation of positive outcomes even in the face of obstacles. This mindset empowers individuals to approach difficulties with a sense of possibility rather than defeat, sporing them to persevere in pursuit of their goals. Moreover, optimism is contagious, radiating warmth, and encouraging to those around us. In times of hardship, it fosters solidarity and collective action, inspiring communities to come together in support of one another. One of the most profound examples of optimism's transformative power lies in personal experiences. For instance, in my own life, optimism and faith have been guiding principles that have propelled through various challenges and led to moments of prosperity. As a devout believer in my Lord and Savior, Jesus Christ, I have drawn strength from the teachings of resilience, hope, and perseverance found in the Bible. Through prayer and unwavering trust in God's plan, I have navigated the difficult circumstances with a sense of optimism, confident that a brighter days lie ahead. One particular instance stands vividly in my memory. A few years ago, I faced a series of setbacks in both my professional and personal life. Despite my best efforts, it seemed though success was eluding me every turn. In moments of despair, I turned to faith for solace and guidance. Through prayer and reflection, I found the courage to persist. Trusting in God had a purpose for my struggles. In time, my optimism and faith were rewarded. Doors that I had previously seemed closed began to open, presenting new opportunities for growth and fulfillment. With each obstacle overcome, I emerged stronger and more resilient than before. Through it all, my unwavering belief in the power of optimism and the grace of God sustained me, fostering a deeper connection to my faith and the world around me. Beyond personal triumphs, optimism also plays a pivotal role in fostering meaningful connections with others. By embracing a positive outlook on life, we invite others to join us on a journey of hope and possibility, whether through acts of kindness, words of encouragement, or simply a shared sense of optimism. We forge bonds that transcend differences and unite us in our, in our common humanity. One compelling example of the profound connection facilitated by optimism is showcased in the remarkable story of the survivors of Uruguayan Air Force Flight 571, as depicted in the documentary Alive. Following a plane crash in the remote Andes Mountains in 1972, a group of young Argentinian rugby players and their companions found themselves stranded in the harsh conditions, facing extreme cold, hunger, and the daunting reality of their isolation. Despite the dire circumstances, the survivors maintain a collective sense of optimism and hope, which became a guiding force in their struggle for survival. Through unwavering determination and resourcefulness, they rallied together, supporting and encouraging one another as they searched for a way to signal for help. Their optimism ultimately led to miraculous rescue as they persevered against all odds, inspiring the world with their extraordinary tale of resilience, solidarity, and the unbreakable human spirit. This remarkable example underscores how optimism can serve as a powerful catalyst for connection, enabling individuals to overcome seemingly insurable challenges and emerge stronger together. Optimism serves as a powerful catalyst for connection, fostering a sense of belonging, solidarity, and mutual support among individuals. By cultivating optimism in our own lives and extending it to others, we strengthen the bonds that unite us and create a more compassionate, resilient, and interconnected world. In essence, optimism is not, is not just a personal attribute. It is fundamental aspect of our humanity that binds us together in a shared journey of hope and possibility. As we cultivate optimism in our world, our own lives, and encourage it into others, we not only enrich our individual experiences, but also contribute to the collective tapestry of human existence. In this spirit, let us embrace the power of optimism, trusting in its ability to connect us, inspire us, and lead us towards a future filled, a future filled with boundless potential.
Thank you, Gabriel. He's very inspiring. Okay, and you're going to talk about?
I was going, yes. So our, our next contestant on The Price is Right, no, is our South Florida District Optimist International Oratorical Contest winner. Being, she represents the Miami Springs Virginia Gardens Club. And we're very proud to announce that she's going to go to St. Louis for the Optimist International World Oratorical Contest on July 18th of this year. So her brother Johnny won first place in the Optimist International District Essay Contest in 2021. And I believe we were, we came before the council at that time as well. Jessina won first place in the Optimist International District Essay Contest in '22. And her brother was her inspiration for competing in the Miami Springs Virginia Optimist Contest. She won second and first place in her oratorical contest in '23 and now in '24. She's gradu, she graduated from Pembroke Pines Charter School. Her dad is an engineer from New York, her mother's from Mexico, her father is the, is the first generation American. She'll be studying environmental engineering at Georgia Institute of Technology in the fall. She says her philosophy, quote, "I've always loved motivating others and sharing the power of optimism. So when I found out that I could do that in the Optimist International Contest, I was so excited to participate." So without further ado, I'd like to invite Je, Janessa, I always mispronounce her name, but anyway, Janessa to come up and give us her oratorical speech, and it's, it's amazing, I've heard it before, so.
Welcome back. I remember you.
How to Change the World with Optimism. Look, if you only had one shot or one opportunity to seize everything you ever wanted in one moment, would you capture it or just let it slip? This is a line from one of my favorite Eminem songs called Lose Yourself, and it helped me develop an optimistic mindset at a young age and change the world with optimism. Throughout the song, Eminem describes the emotions and nerves that a rapper feels as he takes a stage to follow his dream. The beat of the song immediately draws me in, and the lyrics have a powerful message. The lyrics explain the importance of immersing yourself in the moment, seizing the opportunity, and doing your absolute best in whatever you do. I've always been passionate about music. From a very young age, I loved to sing. And as I got older, I became interested in playing instruments like the piano and ukulele. Music has always been a large part of my life and has helped me get through difficult times. But I was afraid of performing for others. I was afraid of their opinions and what they would think of me. What if they thought I wasn't good enough? All of these doubts infiltrated my mind and led me to believe that being a performer and living my dream on stage would be impossible. According to "The Things You Can See Only When You Slow Down," "How to Be Calm in a Busy World" by Hyman Sunim, some say they don't know what they're looking for in life. This might be because instead of getting in touch with how they feel, they have led their lives according to other people's expectations. Live your life not to satisfy others, but to fulfill what your heart desires. If you live your life trying to impress everyone else and not doing what you really want to do, you will be unhappy. So in February of 2023, I signed up to perform at my school's Black Student Union showcase. I was afraid to sing in front of my peers, but I realized that my passion for singing shouldn't depend on the opinions of others. According to "The Magic of Thinking Big" by David J. Schwartz, "Believe it can be done. When you believe something can be done, really believe. Your mind will find the ways to do it. Believing a solution paves the way to solution." I knew that I could do it. I believed in myself. Even though I was afraid, I was going to push past that fear and do it anyway. According to "The Four Agreements: A Practical Guide to Personal Freedom" by Don Miguel Ruiz, "You can have many great ideas in your head, but what makes the difference is the action. Without action upon an idea, there will be no manifestation, no results, and no reward." So I sang. I performed in front of a crowd of over 200 people, and I performed "Listen" by Beyoncé. I was afraid, but I set that fear aside and did it anyway, and it was the best decision I could have ever made. After the show, so many people came up to me and said that my performance had inspired them. Ever since then, I have made it my goal to use optimism to encourage and change the world around me and encourage others to follow their dreams. Now, I frequently perform at open mics and talent shows. Through every performance, I gain confidence and improve. I used to be so nervous to perform in front of others, but I realized that I need to do what I need to do in order to follow my dreams, and I need to set that fear aside and encourage others to do the same. Now, whenever I listen to Lose Yourself by Eminem and these lines play, "You better lose yourself in the music, the moment you own it, you better never let it go. You only get one shot, do not miss your chance to blow. This opportunity comes once in a lifetime, yo." I'm reminded of the importance of encouraging others to follow their dreams and changing the world around me. Thank you.
Thank you, Janessa.
I, I would like to take a moment and say thank you to Robin. She, Robin Heckler, she's on our board as well, but she's in charge of our regional area for putting together the essay and the orator contest. So she doesn't like it when I call her out, but I do want to say thank you to her because this is possible. And I have Ken with me as well, he's one of our board members as well, so.
And I want to say thank you to Jim and Ken and all of the Optimist Club. This is a club, as I always say, the civic clubs in our community in Miami Springs are the best in the nation. No other city has the engagement, the, the passion. And the number of members and the activities of our civic clubs and the Optimist Club is certainly at the top of the list of those and everything that you do for our community. Also with the Boy Scouts, because Jim also. So thank you, and thank you to the Optimist Club for all you do and for bringing these extraordinary young people in front of us, in front of our community, so they can get to know optimism is, you know, what can you say? There's, nothing makes life better than to, to go through it with a sense of optimism. So thank you so much for your inspiration.
Thank you, thank you.
I'm going to take a.
Jan, Eric, all of you. Here, we have this certificate for you. Spring. Thank you, thank you for your inspiration and for being part of our community. You know, every time that we have young people, they're at the council meeting, we see them again, they're going to be our future leaders. We know that one day, as I always say, one day we'll be sitting in the audience and these young people will be our leaders. So we look forward to a lot of future years of your achievements. One, two, three. One, two, three. Actually, oh, those are amazing.
You want to stay down for the Yard of the Month?
Yes, I was going to say, well, we're already here. I know we have a presentation by CMI, but if you'll, while we're already here, you can have the, yes. Just give us a moment, the occasion, because we'll get these two presentations, the Yard of the Month and on our city hall lobby, uh lobby, this is the hall lobby. City Hall Lobby, Artist of the Month. Uh, Lobby, City Hall Lobby, Artist of the Month.
Thank you, have a good evening, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, so today we want to honor the Yard of the Month recipient. Is um, Nevia Suarez, Nevia Suarez here? Okay. Um, she lives at 588 Miller Drive, and she is the recipient of the Yard of the Month Award, so we will get this to her. Um, we want to thank her and her family for being by Miami Springs and I want to encourage every one of our residents sometime this month on drive by 588 Miller Drive and see her um, beautiful yard. And so thank you again to Ms. Suarez, and then we want to announce our City Hall Lobby Artist of the Month, our beloved and extremely talented artist, Mrs. Cavalier, this is Joan Cavalier. Well, thank you very much. And I really mean it for all the residents that are watching, um, stop by sometime this month and see the work of this amazing hometown artist that we have. She's so humble that when I reached out to her to tell her, because I know she has so many amazing paintings, and I said, please be our Artist of the Month again, um, by theme, you know, do a different theme, and she's like, alright, if you really need me to. Ready, one, two, three. One, two, three. Thank you, Joan, for the good following.
Okay, we'll move to um, our next agenda item and it's a presentation by Ray Kasas. Hello, thank you for your patience and you're making a presentation on behalf of the Citizens Independent Transportation Trust, the CITT. Welcome.
Thank you, and it's actually, I'm Javier Betancourt, so Ray helped us set all this up, but I'll introduce myself in a second. I have to say, really intimidating there to sit and listen to those wonderful children and future leaders speak, and I'm like, God, I have to follow that. But it's okay, I'm feeling confident and I'm feeling optimistic. Now, it's tough to feel, so I want you to hold on to that optimism as you listen to my presentation. Because when we talk about transportation, optimism probably isn't the first word that comes to mind. Folks, I'm Javier Betancourt, Executive Director of the Citizens Independent Transportation Trust, or CITT for short. We're the independent agency of Miami-Dade County charged with overseeing your half penny sales tax for transportation and the implementation of the People's Transportation Plan. With me on my team are Mariana Price, who is our Municipal Program Manager. Mariana works very closely with your team here on a regular basis, and Carla Damian, who is our Community Engagement Manager. So I'm gonna go through this quickly, so you could get on to uh, the rest of your agenda. Um, but I wanted to leave you with a lot of slides in case you wanted greater detail. And obviously, if you have any questions, oh, thank you, uh, feel free to ask those. So up on the slide, uh, you'll see a referendum um, that was conducted in 2002. You may remember this if you are around, it was a People's Transportation Plan referendum, and it asked uh, the residents of Miami-Dade County whether they were willing to charge themselves an extra half penny sales tax, so to go from six and a half to seven percent uh, to generate revenue to help improve transportation in Miami-Dade County. And as part of that ballot language, there was some detail, but you notice at the very end, um, we also asked them if you would create a Citizens Independent Transportation Trust, that's us, to oversee those funds, uh, act as a watchdog over those funds to make sure they weren't spent elsewhere. So that's what we do and that's who we are. So once again, um, that referendum obviously was approved, and it's in perpetuity, so that half penny won't go away unless someone decides to. Well, we won't go there, we're gonna be optimistic. And so uh, as part of the half penny, again, that created us, our job as an independent agency of the county is to monitor, audit, review, and oversee and investigate the use of the funds. The funds used by the county and by all of our thirty-four municipalities, including the great city of Miami Springs. So we are governed by a board of citizens. It's in our name and, and we remain true to that, and um, those citizens represent every corner of the county. So the thirteen county commissioners appoint a member, the Dade League of Cities appoints a member, and the mayor of Miami-Dade County. You are, I believe, in Commission District Six, so your representative on the trust is a man named Robert Uwano, and he does a great job on your behalf. Um, by the way, we have vacancies, so not necessarily right now in this district, but spots do open up, so we encourage members of the community to apply to be a member of the CITT. Um, it's fairly easy, you just have to live in the district of the commissioner who appoints you, and you can't have any conflicts of interest with the county, and you cannot be an elected official. Uh, but please apply, you could find our information online at miamidade.gov/citt. This trust is then supported by an office of the CITT, that's me, those are my colleagues, you see the rest of us on the screen. We do a little bit of everything, right? Project review, financial analysis, strategic planning. We monitor and manage the municipal program, community engagement, et cetera. We do all that with less than one percent of the revenues that we collect, so we try to keep ourselves very streamlined, because we want the bulk of the funds to go out into the community to help people, not be spent on bureaucracy, essentially. Uh, skip that for a second. So one of the important things we do is we audit, again, the county and every city on a semi-regular basis to ensure that the monies are being spent appropriately. Your last audit, oh my gosh, I can't see that well, was conducted a number of years ago, and, and you're due for an audit now in 2025. We've never had an issue with the city. You do great, you have great people working for you, so we don't expect any problems. So let's talk about the money. Um, there's been a lot of it, right? So it doesn't sound like a lot, a half penny, but man, does it add up. Almost $5 billion have been collected since 2002. Really, 2003 is when we started collecting. Uh, and the bulk of that has been spent on transit. There's kind of this misinformation or misunderstanding in the community that it's been wasted on other things. No, two-thirds of it have gone to transit. It may not have gone to transit expansion, which was the idea, and there's a reason for that, but it has gone to Miami-Dade Transit. About a quarter of it goes to the cities, and that's distributed on a per capita basis. Larger cities get more, smaller cities get less. Public Works, so that's the Public Works Department for the county, which is charged with roadway expansion, um, you know, infrastructure improvements, guess less than 10%. So for those who say it all went to roadways, simply not true. And then we do have a capital reserve fund that we've been building up, and then again, you see that tiny little sliver is just the operating expenses for our office. Um, here you see, I'm sorry. Oh, I'm trigger happy today. Come on. Ah, alright, we'll just get that. Earlier, there was a graph that showed you how, how that money's been collected and spent over time since 2002, so you have that uh, before you as well, and here is the budget for next year. So an even greater percentage is going to transit, a smaller percentage to public works. As time goes on, we're doing less roadways, more transit. That's essentially the story there. There is a forty-year performer, for those of you who like to get into the details on this stuff, uh, you can find it all in this um, forty-year performer that's available on our website. Alright, so enough about the money and about us, now let's talk about the projects, right? You know, what have we done with $5 billion? Um, quite a bit, right? So speaking optimistically, um, the county and the cities have done a lot. Uh, the cities have spent their funds and continue to spend them on both transit, you know, by which we mean the trolleys or the circulators um, that all of you are running in your different cities, and other transportation projects, right? Uh, uh, traffic circles, sidewalks, uh, road enhancements. Um, then there's the Golden Passport, that was one of the key promises of the PTP, that seniors over sixty-five, uh, and really anyone collecting social security would be able to ride transit for free. And that was instituted in 2002 and continues. We also have fare-free Metro Mover, uh, we have uh, bus service improvements, major highway and road improvements that were part of the original promise have largely been completed. And then finally, we have one expansion of Metro Rail, which occurred a number of years ago to the airport. So I'm gonna ask Mariana Price actually to speak to the municipal programs, just a couple of slides.
Good evening. I'm Mariana Price, Municipal Program Manager. Um, so I'm gonna talk to you today about the municipal program. We have thirty-three municipalities out of the thirty-four in Miami-Dade County who participate in the municipal program. Uh, Miami Springs has an inter-local agreement, as I'm sure you're all aware with, City or Villa de Virginia Gardens. Um, I have written it recently, and it's a great service to have, and it connects to the Hialeah Metro Rail Station, which we love to see the connectivity to our already existing larger um, transit systems. Um, and uh, City of Miami Springs last year collected $802,000, of which they spent over half a million. Um, and this year they're slated to collect, you are slated to collect, uh, $900,000, that was in our predictions. Um, still to be seen, but um, things have been pretty steady, so we'll stay optimistic about that. And um, and that's about. Oh, I love uh, the team at Miami Springs, they're great, they're reliable. Um, Tammy Romero gave a presentation earlier this year before our Municipal Program Committee, Lisette Fuentes, um, we go way back. And is this Chris? Yes, Chris, and Chris is great too. So um, we thank Miami Springs for their participation, they are a star city that um, I know I can always rely on. Reports are always on time. The whole thing, so thank you very much.
Thank you, Mariana, and um, actually, there was one more slide here, you have a list of just some of the transportation improvements, so it's, it's not all transit. You do great things uh, with the rest of your funds as well, and, and continue to. Um, by the way, Mariana and I both have a municipal background, we were most recently before this at the City of Coral Gables, and prior to that, at the City of Miami Agency called the DDA, so we love municipalities and um, support everything you do. Alright, uh, we'll skip this, uh, well, this you might care about. So one of the promises of the PTP was to enhance bus service. Frankly, over twenty years, while they started to do that, then it kind of came back down. They hadn't really done much until recently, when they instituted something you might be getting a lot of phone calls about, called the Better Bus Network. And overall, it's an improvement in service, providing more frequent bus service. However, there are some losers in that equation, right? Um, and I know a lot of cities are getting a lot of calls from very upset residents about routes that were affected. So if, if you're in that position, please be vocal. I mean, that's not something we necessarily work on, it's the Department of Transportation and Public Works at the county, which runs transit. But um, they need to hear from you, they need to hear what's working, what isn't working, so that they can make adjustments, and they are actively making those adjustments today. Alright, so this was the one um, expansion of Metro Rail that we did achieve to the airport, yay. Uh, but now we're really focused on delivering the rest of those promises. Now, it's not all gonna be Metro Rail, in fact, probably only one of the remaining corridors might be Metro Rail. Simply too expensive and takes too long, we don't have enough of those half penny funds to fund it. Uh, and the federal government doesn't give us nearly as much money as they used to in the past to pay for these things. So enter the SMART program, these are the same quarters that were promised to the people as part of the People's Transportation Plan twenty years ago. And they're all in some active stage of planning, development, or construction. So you have the South Quarter, the Beach Quarter, what somewhere may remember as Bay Link, the East-West Corridor, the Kendall Corridor, the Northeast Corridor, and the North Corridor. So great news is that the South Quarter is actively under construction. Bus rap- gold standard bus rapid transit was selected for that corridor, it's gonna operate very much like a train would, except it's much cheaper, because we're using buses. Um, and that should be opening in March or April of next year, so if you go down South Dixie Highway from Dade Land all the way to Homestead, you'll see that being constructed. Alright, the Beach Quarter, a little controversy uh, surrounding this one, as Miami Beach, as the city, has come out against it, inconceivably to me. Um, but the plan is to extend Metro Mover from downtown Miami to the beach, and then also extend Metro Mover from downtown Miami up to the Design District. Um, and that is all still being planned and studied. Okay, the East-West Corridor, this would be largely along either Flagler Street or State Road 836. At one point, it was gonna be bus rapid transit, they've taken a step back to reassess that. Uh, there's some talk now of Metro Mover instead of bus rapid transit, so all that again is being studied, but that's obviously an important corridor, because it's connecting where the people live out west to where the jobs are largely on the east. Kendall's the same thing, I mean, anyone who's been on Kendall Drive, you know, God bless you. It's horrific, and they desperately need a good transit solution, um, and that is also being planned and developed. And then finally, the Northeast Corridor, and not finally, we have two more, Northeast Corridor, I think is probably gonna be the next to go. You know Brightline is already running on these tracks, but Brightline is not a service for everyday commuters, it's simply too expensive. So what we need to do is complement Brightline with something akin of Tri-Rail, a more accessible commuter rail that connects multiple stations along the county, not just downtown and Aventura. Uh, and so um, the county is negotiating that with uh, Brightline uh, and a number of other parties as we speak. And finally, the North Quarter, this is the one that currently is slated to be Metro Rail, and it would run from the existing Metro Rail Station at MLK, north along Twenty-seventh Avenue to the Broward County Line, serving Miami-Dade College North, serving uh, Hard Rock Stadium and others. Um, that's gonna be a huge lift, very expensive, and we don't have the funds, so we're gonna need the feds to step up. Alright, uh, we've also built a number of park-and-ride facilities, we don't need to get into that. Okay, so additional areas of focus of ours, First Last Mile Solutions, and I want to commend the city for everything you've done, just to the drive over here, I saw so many people walking and biking, uh, and it's just like you're built for it, and you're investing in it, so thank you. Uh, the county needs to do a better job of that, other cities need to do a better job of that. So if you don't mind, we're gonna be telling them about all the great things you do here, so they can copy you. Um, improving the customer experience, it's not just about expansion, but taking what we have and making it better, uh, so that it's dependable, it's safe, it's reliable, it's clean. Um, so we're focused on that as well, enhancing county municipal connectivity is another area of focus. Mariana touched on that, we have all these different municipalities doing their own thing, the county doing their own thing. We need for it all to work seamlessly on behalf of the customer, right? The writer doesn't care who's running what, they just want to get from point A to point B as easily as possible. And finally, community engagement. We believe the voters deserve to know what's happened and what's happening with their half penny. And that's why we're doing what we're doing today, we're gonna visit all the cities, different community groups, if you want us to visit any of those civic organizations you spoke about, we'd be happy to present to them. Um, and in that vein, we do have a couple of special community engagement programs. One is the CITT Ambassador Program, which we recently launched. Uh, basically, if you ride transit, and that includes the municipal systems, we want you to be our eyes and ears on the system. You sign up, you apply to be an ambassador, chances are you'll be accepted. Um, and then you will have access to an app in which you will provide observations on a daily basis. And what's cool about the program is you get rewarded for making those observations, you get points, and you can convert those points into free transit passes, free Uber rides, a bunch of free stuff. So it's incentive-based, and it's really helpful and given us an, an eye into what's happening in the system. And we provide that feedback to transit and to the municipalities to address some of the observations and concerns being raised by the writers. And finally, the Mobility Matters Podcast, so I host a podcast every couple of weeks um, out of a studio in South Miami with community newspapers. And um, we've had all sorts of officials, uh, transit agency heads, bus operators, you name it, they've been on the program, and it's just another opportunity to inform the public on what's happening. So I'd like to invite all of you one day to be on the podcast. Uh, no gotcha questions, it's all very friendly. Um, and uh, it's been well received. So with that, I hope I didn't go over time, but I did want to leave some for questions, if you have any, thank you.
Well, thank you so much, thank you Javier, um, and your team for presenting to us. Um, I, I know we rely heavily on the CITT funds, we have always, and in fact, that's often a discussion topic when we're trying to figure out how to fund something, can we use CITT funds for this? Um, sometimes we can, sometimes we can't. So um, let me start off, well, JC, do you have any questions? Because I know you work very diligently with our CITT funds, trying to figure out what's the best use of them.
Well, at this moment, no, I don't have any questions, but we are, as you know, exploring the, you know, on-demand service. So, and we've already executed, or at least approved on our end, the inter-local agreement with, with Miami-Dade County to, to allow for that, so we're in the process of, of that.
And by the way, that's, thank you for that, and um, that's a great example of how we work with the city sometimes to address problems, so a few years ago, you couldn't use your surtax funds for on-demand service, on-demand service didn't exist in 2002, so no one thought to put it in the code. So we actually worked uh, with cities to have the ordinance amended to allow that, because we know you need flexibility and, and options, right? Especially the smaller cities, it's hard to pay for these circulators, because it's expensive, and the on-demand, you know, is a little more flexible.
And, and, and it's not just, it, and, and that's exactly it, every city has um, unique needs. Um, we can talk about size, you know, obviously, they're very large cities out of the thirty-nine municipalities in Miami-Dade County, I think there's thirty-nine right now.
Thirty-four.
Okay, thirty-four, they vary greatly, and you know, you can talk about very large ones like Hialeah to our north, Doral to our west, um, small ones like Virginia Gardens adjacent to us, but also even when we compare small ones, um, small cities like Sunny Isles Beach, I think, has one square mile, they're even smaller than we are, except they're totally different uh, demographic and situation, and we're all in the same county, and that's why I think it's so important that municipalities be allowed to use these funds how they see fits best their needs. We're the ones that are the most in touch with our community, with what works in our community, with the needs that we have, with the things that have worked well in the past. And I think that that's a, um, a very important um, direction for the CITT, I encourage you to follow that too. direction for the CITT. I encourage you to follow that to allow, you know, there's not one size in, especially when we're talking about these close local transportation needs. There's not one size fits all. And we're adjacent to the airport. You know, we're a small community and look at the differences around us. I did want to mention you, you offered to make this presentation to one of our groups, I think to our senior center. And I saw Angie here earlier, but I don't think she's here. JC, if we could coordinate for them to make a presentation to our senior center. We have, it's called our Adult Community Center. And we have about 200 residents from Miami Springs and Virginia Gardens that attend, and they are very active, engaged. I know not that long ago, they were reaching out to us. They wanted to see if we could get them, a group of them, a group of them that likes to explore Bright Line tickets because they'd like to take Bright Line and, you know, ride it up for the day and come back, but it's too expensive for them. So they would be very happy to hear about the CITT, how the funds are used, and also provide you with, I think, very useful questions and perhaps even with the program you were talking about. So I'd like to.
We'd be honored to present to them. So Adam Torres.
And I think the other thing I wanted to ask you about, well, to mention with the Better Bus Network, you mentioned municipalities being, we were certainly caught off guard all of a sudden, you know, in November, we found out they're cutting our bus services. And even though we don't have that many residents, I think the tally was 60 or something that we're writing, that's 60 individuals that depend on, you know, that's 60 individuals that depend on mass transit, on our public transit to get to work, to see their families, to come in and out of the city, to go to schools, several of them are college students. So it's significant. And I think that again is one of the things that I know you keep in mind, but that we have to stress is it varies between municipalities. A larger municipality might have a lot more individuals that are affected. But every single one of the 60 individuals in our community that are impacted by those changes, by elimination of bus routes, you know, are important to us. The last thing I wanted to.
And on that point, if I may, if if the city isn't in touch with the Transit Department on that, then we can.
JC has reached out immediately. Yes.
Perfect. The Better Bus Network, and they are going to come back to us with Route 37 in July.
Okay, great.
The other thing is you mentioned our shuttle, which we fund with the CITT, and it is great. It goes through the city and it connects to Hialeah Metro Rail Station because it was important for us to provide that, but we only have one. And it takes an hour to go around the city, and that's to go around the city and get to the Metro Rail Station. If you're going, and then your journey begins on Metro Rail. So I want to stress that because even though sometimes it seems like, well, they have a shuttle, the reality is, you know, how feasible is it for someone to use that shuttle if we can't, if we don't have the funding to have it run often enough or to have more than one shuttle?
Yeah, no, and we hear this from all the cities, right? We could do so much more with more funding. We're constrained in how much funding we can give you. It's a formula. It's by population. There is some preliminary talk about going back to the voters at some point for another half penny. And presumably, you know, cities will continue to get a share of that. But until we, I think, show the public that we're able to get some of these major rapid transit projects done and get them, you know, going, I don't think anything like that would pass, frankly, in a referendum. So but a few years from now, I think it would be ripe for a discussion on another half penny, which would mean more funds for the cities to expand on that service.
And I guess the other thing I wanted to mention is, JC, I don't know if you and Tammy, I know you had mentioned this, if you've heard anything else, that we were told one of the good things with the Better Bus Network is, what is Better Bus System Network? I forget what the acronym, Better Bus System.
It's Network.
Better Bus Network.
Better Bus Network, is that there will be buses running along 36th Street that will go directly to Miami Beach.
That's correct.
So once you get on a bus on 36th Street, you can actually take it all the way to the beach. For us, that's, that's great for our community to be able to get to the beach. And for the hotels, we have a lot of hotels along 36th Street and, you know, and those tourists will be able to access the beach. So that was good to know. And I guess the last thing I wanted to ask you, and then I'll let the rest of the council, I'm sure, have questions, is there's two metro rail stations that are significantly close to, they're not in our community, but they're very adjacent to us. The Okeechobee Metro Rail Station and the MIA. Do you, what are your thoughts on what's happening with those? What are the plans with those that you know?
In terms of plans, I have heard, and I'm not involved in this personally, of some kind of transit-oriented development project that is going to be going on at the Okeechobee Metro Rail Station. They have this enormous public parking garage that's largely underutilized. So some TOD potential there. But in terms of actually expanding transit service or connecting to and from those stations to your community, I'm not aware of any such plans. Yeah, it's not part of the SMART Plan at this point. There is some talk about developing a SMART Plan 2.0. So once we finish these, what's next? So if you have ideas as to how your community can better connect to those stations or or otherwise, I would encourage you to have those conversations with your county commissioner so that he can have those conversations with the appropriate agencies and officials at the county.
Thank you so much. And by the way, the connection to the airport was, you know, a wonderful addition to the metro rail. That was something that really changed a lot of things accessibility-wise. Is there anyone on the council that would like to speak? Yes, sir.
Just a couple of things. One, you mentioned the extension to Miami Beach and the complaint. It's, I know they don't want cars, but they would want people in that.
You know, people have differences of opinion. And there is a vocal community in Miami Beach that does not want Metro Mover connecting to them across the MacArthur, for whatever reasons. I'm not going to make any assumptions. And the city commission did pass a reso asking the county to explore other alternatives.
And you mentioned there's going to be an extension to the Design District. Is that, did I hear that correctly?
Yes. So north from the northernmost existing Metro Mover Station, I think it's a school board going north, I forget the exact street it would travel, connecting, you know, Midtown, Wynwood, all the way to the Design District.
And you made a point of how many folks you see walking and biking in the city. And I will shamelessly promote that some of them are going to our restaurants. We have great restaurants here. So and then, of course, Bright Line. I was in a conference in Orlando a couple of weeks ago, and some of the folks that came from Miami took Bright Line. And when they told me what they paid, I mean, I was hoping maybe I could take the, you know, take Bright Line and not have to drive the three and a half hours. And then I saw what it cost, and I said, well, might have to be another time. But hopefully, at some point, that will be more feasible for us. I think the connection between South Florida and Central Florida on Bright Line is, should be a natural one, but we'll see, we'll see how that goes. Thank you very much.
And the great thing is they've really laid the foundation for us to now come in with that commuter rail and connect not only Miami-Dade County, but Miami-Dade to Broward and Palm Beach County, the larger projects called the Tri-Rail Coastal Link. And it would really provide an affordable, what's the key difference there? An affordable regional commuter rail line in South Florida, kind of akin to Tri-Rail, but further east, connecting a lot of our more dense population areas.
Any other questions? Thank you again.
Thank you all for allowing us the time to present. We appreciate.
Anything you can do to support and promote our transit needs here in our community, we're greatly appreciative.
We are your champions out there. I promise you that. Okay, thank you.
Thank you so much. And we'll set that up for the senior, the senior center visit that I know they'll greatly appreciate your input. Okay, so we move to open forum, and we have, there were two people that wanted to speak on the agenda item for CMI, and we'll move you up to the open forum. Are you still here? Let's see, Vince. Adele? Come on in. I have Vince first, and then I have, well, y'all can decide who wants to speak first, and then I have Mayor Wheeler.
Whoever runs faster.
Mayor Richard Wheeler.
I am Richard Wheeler. I've served on the board of CMI. Thank you for moving us up. That's you tend to have long meetings. We did as well, but we'll get over it. Councilman Santin, thank you for putting the discussion item on the, on the agenda so we could at least have the opportunity to say, folks, we really, really need to get this done. Four years, no agreement, and our group of professional, passionate people have functioned in good faith, running a business, improving a mansion, donating time and money. And at this point, we're handcuffed. Grant applications require agreements to show that you have a right to ask for the grant for that particular facility. We can't do it. We're handcuffed. Small businesses can't make commitments to vendors and contractors and employees and staff or whatever else because we're handcuffed. Now, we haven't handcuffed ourselves for customers. So we are looking forward to the weddings and other meetings that have been scheduled over the next couple of years. And we've signed contracts for those in good faith. And that's where we are today. My only purpose standing here is this, can we direct the city manager to place an item on the agenda for consideration of approval of an agreement with CMI for continued operations, maintenance, restoration of the Curtis Mansion? That's it. It's, you've got one meeting left in June. You break for July. I don't know where this process ends, but I'd just ask you to end it. Put it on the table, vote, and let's, let's get it done. Turn our group loose. And we'll continue the visions we have for a more grand Curtis Mansion. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Mayor. Vince, Adele?
Good evening, Mayor and the rest of the council, the rest of the team. I support what Mayor Wheeler said. We really are a group of people that voluntarily work hard in maintaining the, this Curtis Mansion and also the Miami Springs Historical Society. I have been here in Miami Springs for over 30 years. I'm proud to say that I'm very proud to be live here in Miami Springs and raised two of my boys here. And I just want to tell you, a city without history is just like a person without a soul. It's totally meaningless. We need to continue to grow our city historically. We have a lot of beautiful things here, and we need to promote it, and we need to conserve it. So that's all I have to say. Thank you so much for your attention.
Thank you, sir. I believe we'll try to get that on the agenda for the next meeting. All right. We'll move now to approval of the council minutes for the May 28 regular meeting. Okay, any discussion? Call the vote, please.
Vice Mayor Fahad.
Yes.
Councilwoman Bravo.
Yes.
Councilman Vasquez.
Yes.
Mayor Mitchell.
Yes.
The motion carries.
Thank you. We move to a public hearing on ordinance, a second reading.
Item 8A is an ordinance on second reading. It's an ordinance, excuse me, an ordinance of the City of Miami Springs, Florida, amending Chapter 70 Traffic Regulations to create Section 70-03 of the City Code of Ordinances to authorize the placement, installation, and operation of speed detection systems on roadways maintained as school zones, establish traffic enforcement procedures when speed detection systems are utilized for school zone speed limit violations, and create hearing procedures relating to such school zone speed limit violations. Providing for severability, providing for codification, providing for conflicts, and providing for an effective date. Mayor and council, there have been no changes to this ordinance between first and second reading. I know we had a pretty robust discussion on first reading, and you had the presentation by the chief, but I'm happy to answer any questions. My, my lead on this is our colleague Roger Poe. As you know, he's driving from another meeting this evening and isn't with us, but I'm happy to answer any questions you may have.
Thank you, Heidi. Let me go ahead. And before we ask questions, I don't want to forget, let me open the public hearing. If there's, I'm opening the public hearing on this. If there's anyone that would like to speak on this, you're welcome to come up. Erica, is there anyone online?
No one online, Mayor.
All right, I'm closing the public hearing.
Yes, ma'am.
Motion to approve 8A.
Any discussion? Call the vote, please.
Vice Mayor Fahad.
Yes.
Councilwoman Santin.
Yes.
Councilwoman Bravo.
Yes.
Councilman Vasquez. Mayor Mitchell.
Yes.
The motion carries.
Thank you. We move to agenda item nine, consent agenda. Is there an item that anyone wants to pull out to discuss independently?
To the chair.
Yes, ma'am.
I'd like to do a motion to approve 9A, but with discussion on B, C, and D.
Okay, so you want to pull.
Just for the record, yes.
You want to pull B, C, and D to discuss those separately?
Just so that the administration can have a chance to discuss.
All right, so you have a motion to approve 9A. Yes, is there a second? All right, any discussion? Call the vote, please.
Vice Mayor Fahad.
Yes.
Councilman Santin.
Yes.
Councilwoman Bravo.
Yes.
Councilman Vasquez.
Yes.
Mayor Mitchell.
Yes.
The motion carries.
All right, thank you. And then we'll move to item 9B. And Councilwoman, I'll let you, well, let's read the resolution first.
I'll go ahead and read it. This is a resolution of the Mayor and City Council of the City of Miami Springs, Florida, Selecting Stone Concept Miami, Inc. For construction of the Hook Square Pump House replacement project pursuant to invitation to bid number 04-2324, authorizing negotiation and execution of a construction contract in an amount not to exceed $285,726, and providing for an effective date.
All right, Councilwoman.
I didn't have anything to say on the item. I just wanted to, first off, just for clarity and purpose, so that our community understands these investments that we were doing here on Hook Square, which is nothing new. Just for the formalities of information, I'd like for the city manager just to discuss these items.
Sure. The Hook Square pump is a pump house replacement. We're replacing the stormwater pump that pumps water out into, to the canal and as well as the housing of it. It is completely entirely funded through grants. I correctly come wrong if there's, I think we're overfunded at this point. So we, this is the second time this project goes out to bid. The first time we didn't receive any bids. To Tammy's credit, I, you know, Tammy, Liz and Amy, our procurement specialists, did a fantastic job. Re-bid it. We got three bids, and the prices came in. Great. So I strongly recommend a rule. And this is one of the ones that Senator Avila is like, okay, let's get it going.
Do you want to move on to C and D?
Well, that's, that's.
Well, no, let's take them one at a time.
Separate. So we'll, let's pass them each individually. So go ahead and pass a motion if there's a motion for this.
Motion to approve 9B.
Second that.
Any more discussion? Call the vote, please.
Vice Mayor Fahad.
Yes.
Councilwoman Santin.
Yes.
Councilwoman Bravo.
Yes.
Councilman Vasquez.
Yes.
Mayor Mitchell.
Yes.
The motion carries.
Okay, we move to 9C.
This is a resolution of the Mayor and City Council of the City of Miami Springs, Florida, approving an agreement with Sierra Software, Inc. for a public safety platform and duress application, providing for authorization and providing for an effective date.
Mayor, this, this software, this is an idea that was brought to me by Chief Deal. And I'll have him come up now in a second to, to speak more about it. But this is, this software was created in response to the Marjorie Stoneman Douglas shooting. It is a software that assists law enforcement agents to communicate better with each other during a critical incident. And I'll have him, and which is also funded by a grant. So I will have Chief explain it more because it's really good.
Thank you. Yes, this is funded until 2026 through the Parkland Grant. This software basically is an application that is, can be used on a desktop, laptop, cell phone. Our agency by going forward with this, we would be able to download the application, every single officer. We could have it on a desktop in our dispatch center. If an incident begins, any information that comes into us, we can put onto this app and get out to everybody, including video, footage, still photographs. They're all time stamped. They allow you to, you know, zero in on a subject during. They're all time stamped. They allow you to, you know, zero in on a subject during an active assailant type of incident. The other parts are, there's a mapping component to this. So, I have this on my cell phone, on this app, and I'm logged in and I'm responding. Well, it's going to show that in real time. As I approach, I advise I need a perimeter set up on a certain location, and I start calling off perimeter points. Well, our dispatch, they can literally go into the app, notate those perimeter points, and then start dispatching units by looking at the app to see who's closest to these locations, not by just sending an officer, raising them by their unit number, having no clue where they're at. And they send them, they're sending the closest unit available. As other agencies get this app as well, let's say Virginia Gardens, Medley, Miami Dade School Police, whoever else. Incident occurs, they log on. Now, we see them, and now we see where they're going. We also can identify the units that are coming. K-9, SRT, motor unit, et cetera. The nicest thing about this is that if enough agencies get involved, this is just another excellent tool, you know, to have in our toolbox during any kind of critical incident. Now, away from that, city-sponsored events, Fourth of July, Fourth of July Parade. We were hoping to get this a little bit earlier, but it didn't work out that way. But we were going to utilize this for the Fourth of July Parade as well as the Fourth of July fireworks, because that way all of our officers would have the app. They'd be logged in. We could tell where all of them are at. And if we have something occur, say for the fireworks, for instance, we have a disturbance. Some people get a little bit out of hand, start firing off fireworks. We'll know what officer is going to be closest to them, and we'll dispatch those units right there. And if we have to send additional ones, we'll send the closest ones to them rather than pulling somebody from a far distance away that we don't need to do. But I mean, it's basically, we have till mid twenty twenty-six to utilize it and for those kind of special events. And I'm hoping we don't ever have to have use it for a critical event, but if we do a critical incident, then we'll have it on hand to see how it works. But we're quite impressed with it. And the way Roger drafted the agreement, when the grant funding runs out in twenty-six, we'll have the option to exit gracefully without any penalties or anything like that. So, hopefully, we don't have to because I think it's a great program that we should continue using and God forbid, I mean, we can use it for Fourth of July, but hopefully not use it for anything worse. So, I just want to let you know for the record.
Motion to approve Resolution nine C.
We have a second. Is there any discussion? Okay, thank you, Chief. Call the vote, please.
Vice Mayor Fahad?
Yes.
Councilman Santeen?
Yes.
Councilwoman Bravo?
Yes.
Councilman Vasquez?
Yes.
Mayor Mitchell?
Yes.
The motion carries.
Okay, thank you. We move to nine D.
This is a resolution of the City Council of the City of Miami Springs, Florida, establishing rates for collection of garbage, trash, and recycling for residential and commercial customers effective October first, twenty twenty-four, providing for implementation, providing for an effective date.
Mayor, council members, as you know, after the the presentation by our auditors, the Solid Waste Fund or the Sanitation Fund needed an adjustment in the rates. And so, what this reflects here is an adjustment so that we will not operating, be operating at a loss, which it has been since two thousand eighteen, if I'm not mistaken. And we're trying to correct that with this new rate. And this, we're not, we're not touching the service levels or anything at, you know, at this point. I don't want anybody to forget. This is just the rates.
And I think that's an important point, J.C., that our audit team suggested that our trash fees are under what they should be, and that they recommended that we increase them to cover our costs and to have a little extra. I understand with this, we'll have a little extra we'll be building.
Start putting back.
Start putting back.
And what we're, what we're looking at, what this means is it's about eighty dollars a year increase, and it roughly comes out, it's eighty, around eighty dollars, correct?
Sixty dollars a year.
I'm sorry.
For her household.
About five dollars a month.
Five dollars a month. Okay.
My apologies.
Thank you.
Motion to approve ninety?
There a second?
Second.
Okay, any discussion? Call the vote, please.
Vice Mayor Fahad?
Yes.
Councilman Santeen?
Yes.
Councilwoman Bravo?
Yes.
Councilman Vasquez?
Yes.
Mayor Mitchell?
Yes.
The motion carries.
Thank you. Okay, we move to item twelve, and we'll start with twelve. Eight, the golf carts. Yes. So, Councilwoman?
Something fun and light to discuss for a change, I hope. All right, so I'm going to just read a small memo that I provided, just so we can open up for exchange and discussion. So, here it goes. So, I'm presenting for the council to consider a golf cart ordinance. Reason being is that there are numerous benefits to living in a golf cart community. For one, golf carts are more affordable to buy and affordable to buy and affordable to drive than cars. That's obvious. Americans spend so much time behind the wheel. It would be nice to provide an option to get some fresh air and have a switch of pace, which will in turn benefit the environment to reduce the local carbon print. Here are some examples: visiting a local friend, going to the salon, going to the doctor, going to doctor's appointments, meeting for coffee, going to the bank, going to the grocery store, enjoying a local restaurant, picking up a grab and go, attend a local event, sporting or recreational events, which we have a lot of those, visiting our local amenities. It could be our adult center, our recreation center, our local parks, even the city. You have to come to City Hall. Taking the kids to school, which in turn, we have just passed an ordinance on second reading for the school crossings, and I know that a lot of parents would like to take their children to school on a golf cart. Less, there's less parking, parking usage, together with strength, strengthening local relationships by frequently hosting such events as in holiday gatherings, which we do, parades, and festivals. I got a lot of feedback on that because there's a lot of families that would like to participate in the golf cart events that we do, but they don't want to really get into these LSVs with tags and other restrictions that the state has. Having a golf cart is more affordable. We'll get into that later. Parades are a unique cultural aspect of the golf cart style, and communities sponsors various holiday parades and use them for processions for special occasions. Additionally, this will save residents money on gas, less mile usage, and wear and tear on their vehicles, and provide for a more enjoyable way of enjoying the community and slowing down the pace. When you drive in the open air, you have more ability to observe and enjoy your surroundings and really enjoy our beautiful city. By default, this would reduce heavy local traffic and reduced speeds. This is the same thing we were talking about, parking habits. I think that we can probably create better driving habits. Lastly, adding value and enjoyment for our residents is what we are here for. I believe our residents have long awaited a golf cart ordinance to be enacted to enjoy what the City of Miami Springs, also known to our founder Glenn H. Curtis, as the Country Club Estates has to offer with other options, with another option and more enjoyable method of local transportation within the city. I know that Councilman Vasquez brought this up back in October of twenty twenty-two. There was a, supposed to be a follow-up. There was a follow-up with no certainty of movement. I'm revisiting this again to see if, you know, we're trying to improve the quality of life for our residents. We have a lot of independent senior citizens that don't necessarily want to drive, but they would be willing to use a golf cart as an option to, another option of transportation to move around the city. Also, we have local residents that are golfers. So, if they have a golf cart, we can, obviously, they would still have to go to the golf cart, golf course to pay their entry, but that would maybe be a potential option for them to use their own golf carts and reduce the usage on our, on our city funds as far as, you know, leasing golf carts and stuff like that. Keebuskeen has a very simple ordinance that perhaps we can replicate. I know that this item was also visited back in two thousand and fifteen. There was a comprehensive report done by the Coradino Group. And they were just, they, they just, they blew it off because of the amount of supposedly golf cart signage, which I think we can revisit that. I visited Keebuskeen this, this past weekend, and it was, I took various pictures, and various pictures of what I took are exactly the same examples that I mentioned here. People going to grocery stores, picking up their kids, going to the park. It just feels, I think that our city, actually, I feel like our city is safer in the aspect of speed and the traffic, because Keebuskeen is just like one way in, one way out. It was really, it was, it was pretty fast. I feel that our city, if you look at the report, the whole city, for the most part, actually, you know, the whole city is at thirty miles per hour, which is apparently, according to other areas, a golf cart can share the roads in miles per hours of up to thirty miles per hour. I don't, did I bring, I brought the report with me. I'm sure that all of you have the Coradino Group report, which was pretty comprehensive. Everything was positive. They suggested that we can be a golf cart community. They offered the alternative, they provided three alternatives. The second alternative was the best. So, basically, to allow the golf cart usage with obviously some requirements that the golf cart characteristics has to have with limitations on certain roads based on whatever our chief wants to exclude. But if you look at the here. Okay, just to give you an example, our whole city here, I don't know if you guys have it, looks like this. Our whole city is thirty miles per hour, right, with the exception of Westward, I think half of Westward going into where it says, welcome to, it starts at twenty-five. Right, so there's kind of like a inconsistency there. So, maybe we want to like fix that, not sure. But overall, the whole city is basically commutable with a golf cart based on what I read here and based on, on the regulations that other municipalities have. So, I want to know, I want to get into discussion because I think that our city is more than capable to be a golf cart community. We have the LSVs, but the LSVs can keep up with, with traffic up to thirty-five miles per hour, which in our city, we don't even have thirty, thirty-five miles per hour. They provided, I mean, honestly, the report was great. I have no objections there. It was doable. I just don't know why it was just set aside because of signage.
Chief, could you come up so, because I think we're going to have some questions for you. Yes, sir.
Yeah, so, when this came up, Councilman Vasquez put it on the, on the agenda, and I think that we, we did a lot of the heavy lifting and we actually followed up Candace, who was one of the attorneys from Wyserota, who's their resident expert on, on golf carts, low-speed vehicles. If my memory serves me correctly, what one of the things that we were pushing for the last time was, which is slightly different, was us as a city, because I think, I think there was a debate about whether or not we wanted, we want to encourage for these golf carts and to have all the safety features of a low-speed vehicle, to have the, the lights and the safety features, the seat belts, the low-speed vehicle sign, the insurance. One of the things that I know that I was pushing for, and I think also Councilman Vasquez, as somebody who recently, or actually, I'm still in the process, it's very, very, it's a very cumbersome process to get. You could buy a golf cart and they'll tell you that it's street legal, but getting a tag on that cart is a very cumbersome process. You got to take it to get it weighed, which means you either have to trailer it or you have to go like odd hours, and then you have to take it to the DMV. It's a very, very cumbersome process. And one of the things that we talked about was creating a process within the city whereby the city would just check to make sure that you have all these features and give a decal certifying that you've complied with the insurance and all the safety requirements that, I think there was kind of consensus that we didn't want to just allow golf carts without the safety features. And then, that's when the resident expert from Wyserota came and, and presented. And my understanding is that there was a state law after that Coradino Group study that preempted municipalities from doing the types of ordinances similar to what they have in Keebuskeen, and I think also Pinecrest. And my understanding is that even after that, there was another state law that preempted it even more. It's my understanding that Candace, who's the resident expert, is on maternity leave. So, I think, which, I'm sorry if that means you guys have to become experts in her place. But have you, since, since we spoke last Thursday, is, am I characterizing that right in terms of that there were some things that changed at the state level that preempted local municipalities?
I won't, you are correct in that there was a twenty twenty-three law that did affect golf cart regulations at the municipal level. I don't want to go as far as saying that it preempted us. I know Roger was sort of going in that direction. I haven't looked at it. So, I don't know to what extent it preempts us, if any, but I do know that there are more regulations on what we can and can't do. So, if the council chooses tonight to give us direction to prepare something, we're happy to do so. We can go ahead, redo the research. Candace, by the way, did have her baby today, so.
Okay, congratulations.
And, and so, you know, it just depends on what the council's direction is this evening.
So, I, I think that what's important for us to kind of determine is what direction we, I mean, obviously, everything would have to be checked, followed up by, by, by legal to ensure that we can still do it. Do we want to say kind of like the Keebuskeen route, like, hey, you can just drive golf carts? I think also the age limit was raised for golf carts and LSVs. It used to be, I believe, like fourteen. Now, it's eighteen across the board. But do we want to just say golf carts are allowed and only in certain places? Or are we revisiting what we had discussed last time, which was make the, make them low-speed vehicles, which means that you, in order to convert a golf cart, you have to put all of those safety features. You still have to have the insurance. I know that our former Chief Guzman had a lot of concerns about the safety of it. And then, try to create a process by which you make it easier for residents to be able to convert their golf carts into LSVs because you, the city would be taking on, I think the, the idea was try to do it through the community policing office or have certain events where some officers would be available to, you know, people, kind of like when we do the shredding days, have somebody available that you could go with your cart and they could certify that you have all those features, because that's two different things. Turning a golf cart into an LSV an incredibly cumbersome process. Opening it up to just having golf carts is, is different. And then there's the other, the other issue of whether or not, you know, what is allowed now with that state law. So, to me, I feel like that's what we need to discuss.
What about, I think, if, if I read, I, I think everyone here, I know personally, I think golf carts in our community are a really good fit. We, you know, that's the ambiance we have. Obviously, this is something that has become before the council, before any of us were on the council, and since we've been on the council, it's come before us. And it kind of just dead-ended because it seemed too cumbersome then. But why don't we, instead of going on and on about the possibility, since we don't know exactly what the, the new state requirements are, why don't we give direction to the staff to come back to us, to tell us what is possible? And then we can decide, you know, within the parameters of what's possible. It may be that I, and Chief, I'd like to hear from you, but I find it surprising that on roads, on regular roads, we can just allow motorized vehicles without, you know, just because it's a golf cart and nothing. And I know that a lot of, that's been the holdup with motorized scooters. You know, that motorized scooters want to come to communities, but communities have to create ordinances to deal with them of how, you know, like, for instance, if it's not, if it's not a motor, if it's not a licensed vehicle, How do you cite someone? What do you do? You give a citation for your golf cart? You shouldn't have it on the road. You know, there's, there's all these things that. And again, I don't think unless, is there anyone in the council that is against this, moving forward on this? Like, you know, exploring it, let's explore it.
Against what, though? I, I wouldn't be in favor of just opening it up to golf carts without.
Well, that, let's find out what's available, what's possible. It may not be possible to even have golf carts without safety features. Through the chair. But I can tell you, one of the things that I've seen in Miami Springs that concerns me, and it has nothing to do with it, whether it's allowed or not. It's just something that happens, is golf carts going up and down our street with, you know, some young kids and all their friends. And there's six of them or seven of them hanging out of the golf cart. Yes, they can't go faster than thirty, but. You know, they're having a party on the golf cart. I know they're having fun. We've all been there and it's a blast, but.
Something happens.
Well, there's a stop sign. They miss the stop sign and they get hit. Um, and uh. You know, liability-wise, it's, we're allowing vehicles that may be not qualified or something. So I think we have to. Be very careful as to how we decide to do this, but I don't see why it can't be done. You know, um, I don't see why we can't find a, a happy medium. And Councilwoman, I think you're right. Um, you know, this is a, a good community for it. It suits us. Um. Chief, what do you have?
I'm gonna be the devil's advocate. I feel exactly the same way Chief Guzman did. I feel exactly the same way Chief Bond did when this first was approved for low-speed vehicles. We live in Miami. You allow golf carts with the caveat, as you said, you want them to have insurance. Okay, they pay for their insurance. Then they decide they're not gonna pay for the next six months when it goes to renewal. What happens? Nothing, because they don't have a driver's li- I'm sorry, a license plate attached to this vehicle. And they're not gonna suspend their license because it's a golf cart. So you all know as well as I do, there will be some people taking advantage of that. And for the record. Since we began having, allowing low-speed vehicles on our streets. We've had one traffic crash, one. I feel as though, and so did Chief Guzman, that is because the owners of these low-speed vehicles are responsible. They don't take advantage. We don't have issues very often where we find children operating them. When it first started, yes. After we educated the public, and I, I myself carry a, a manual envelope full of the whole list of what you need to do to make it street legal. Um, every now and then, yes, I still see an unlicensed one on the road. Every now and then I see an adult driving down a roadway with their infant sitting in the front seat. No child seat, no seatbelt. Um, it unfortunately, that it, it boggles my mind why someone put their infant in that kind of danger. But um, I do foresee that if you unlicense this and become golf carts, you know, galore. You're gonna have some major issues. I believe you're gonna see a lot more children on them and you possibly see a lot more crashes. I just think you're taking the, you're taking that. Aspect of. There's accountability with insurance, having the vehicle licensed, completely set up, street legal. And that's the only way you're gonna get that license plate.
Through the chair, thank you. So I have here from the Police Department of Kibiskine, they have a very simple process to track and regulate. You can't control everything anybody does. I can't control a minor going behind somebody's parents' car and driving off. I can't control. If uh somebody on a moped or on a bike uh wishes to take the stop sign the same, we're gonna have, we're gonna have a tragedy, right? I think we have to have um some sort of uh accountability and process and. And, and be optimistic about this, because a lot of cities do it. And I just don't understand that, why can't we do it? And I, I mean, it's just, I understand um that safety is a concern. Um, back in October of twenty-twenty-three, the state did pass, I, I printed out all the state statutes and all the laws. It doesn't prohibit. Prohibit a municipality to incorporate an ordinance to allow this. Um, you need, for Kibiskine, you need a, a valid driver's license, a valid golf cart insurance. Of uh vehicle registration or bill sale. So when you go and buy your, your golf cart, you need to show proof that you own it. Um, they pay a permitting fee so that it can get inspected, and there's an annual decal that goes on the golf cart. So, you know, if the golf cart person is parking in a, an illegal spot, or they just need to be identified, that's a way for our police. Um, to, to look at a, a login, identify the cart. Also, you have to be eighteen years of age with a, a driver's license, a valid driver's license to drive alone. If you are under the age of eighteen with a learner's or driver's license, you need to be accompanied by a twenty-one-year-old licensed person. So that's gonna, I think that's gonna alleviate a lot of the, the minors behind the wheels. Again, um, can we control? A, a minor going behind somebody, a, a parent's back and, and taking their golf cart? Probably not, but I think that we have to hold parents uh accountable for, for their children's actions, right? I think that this is a little bit, we're getting into the next.
A little confused with what you're saying. Is it, you're saying that. And I want to clarify, are you then in agreement with Councilman Behat that um you want them to be licensed and street legal?
Well, yeah, this is gonna be, no, no, golf carts are not.
You're just wanting to.
This is gonna be, they have to be decal. They get a little, whatever color it is of the city.
Decals would mean that you have to have a driver's license to operate them?
Yes, yes.
Was that what you're saying?
Because my understanding was when we visited thi- this before, one of the things was that with the low-velocity vehicles, even you could be fourteen. And drive them.
They changed that.
Oh, they changed that, okay, alright.
So, you know, a lot of the safety measure, they've gone up. Um, they also put here must be equipped with headlights and windshield. So even the, a golf cart, even on the Corodino Group. On alternative two, they provided that it would have to be set up as. You know, the looks and crannies that an LSV has, but obviously it doesn't go up to that uh. To those velocities. I understand it's gonna take maybe a little bit of adjusting. But if we're not willing to, to at least look, uh, look into this, I mean, I know an ordinance can be fabricated because this is not illegal. It's, it's, it's an option. Now, it, it's if we want to exercise the option, you know? Uh, on the, on the report, there are some suggested streets that we should keep off, right? Obviously for, for safety and, and that's okay. But to, to sit here and say that we, we can't do it because we can't control people's actions, we're never. When it be able to control people's actions a hundred percent. I would just like to have a little bit of faith in our community. Um, to see if we could give this a shot with the safety measures.
Um, did it, somebody want to, yes, sir.
Yeah, I just want some clarity, I guess, on the registration part. Because I've heard from golfers or golf cart people out there that, uh, I guess the registration part is if you want to do it. Through the uh Division of Water Vehicles. It's a, it gets more complicated because if you don't have a bill of sale, if you don't have a way of showing, because a lot of these things are sold in the, you know, in the uh. I don't wanna say the black market, but they're, the market out there that nobody really has good registrations for them.
Yeah, they wouldn't be able to register.
So they wouldn't be able to register. So you're talking about registration to this, with the city police?
For the golf cart. LSVs are separate. LSV has to continue as a vehicle. So they have to go to DMV. That hasn't, that's not gonna affect. Um, the city at all. It's only golf.
For the golf cart, when they come to the police department to, to do a inspection of the.
With a driver's license, insurance, vehicle registration or a bill sale, and they have to pay them whatever fee it is that the council decides.
Are you saying registration of what?
Right, a registri- to register the cart inside of the city, so it can give a little.
I was gonna say, it's, most golf carts are not gonna be able to have a registration.
Yeah, and I'm gonna be honest, there's a lot of golf carts right now riding around without anything. So I'd rather have something. You're not gonna be able to avoid it.
How would, between the low, low-velocity vehicles, right now, low-speed vehicles? And these, I don't really see the difference in.
There's a lot of.
What is the difference?
What is the speed?
The most concerned.
What is, what is the limited, what is the limits?
No, it, it's not even about the speed.
If you're requiring these kind of things, it seems like we're pretty close. I mean, one is just the golf carts, the other one was. What is the big difference as far as safety or as far as?
As I said before, when, if you're gonna get it licensed as a low-speed vehicle, the whole inspection process, it's certified. It is basically, you're gonna have insurance. Otherwise, if you don't, you allow that to lapse, your license will be suspended, your driver's license will be suspended. The golf cart way that she, that Councilwoman Bravo was talking about, there's no repercussions. If they're involved in any kind of traffic crash or stop for a traffic violation of some sort, running a stop sign, filing someone's ride away. In a golf cart, we have no way of citing them.
Can't cite them.
And if the only way to actually cite them would be through a county, I'm sorry, a city ordinance. And that's where they would get involved. And we'd have to pay for council to handle that. Alright, I'm sorry, city, city attorney would have to pay. You know, be paid to handle that. I don't think you guys want to go down.
You can also re- revoke the privilege. I mean.
Okay, so let's, let's do this. Um.
Through the chair.
Yes, sir.
Uh, I want to share some thoughts as the person, as Councilman had mentioned, uh, brought this to council the last time. And I did so because I heard from at least a dozen residents. Um, uh, some of them well-known to us here, who brought this up and we had conversations and we met, we talked about it. Came back here, I asked about, it had been done in twenty fifteen and there were, there were a number of issues. With the process. Then one of them was a very expensive. Um, I believe something like thirty thousand dollars to get signage. Because one of the things that I, I learned at that time, I don't have a golf cart, I don't have a low-speed vehicle. Uh, although I use it for my campaigns, but that's a different story. Um, and I could tell you what it's like to drive around Miami Springs in one of those. Let me tell you, it's not fun. For me, it wasn't anyway. Um, so there were these, there were these issues that were there. Number one. Were we going to allow them on all Miami Springs streets? Right? So I, when I was campaigning, I didn't drive it on Curtis Parkway. For one. One, because people don't follow the speed limit on Curtis Parkway. And number two, it's a really slow-moving vehicle, right? Even though it had lights and everything on it. Uh, so that was one thing that was considered back in twenty fifteen, was were they going to be allowed on all roadways? Right? I think Councilwoman is saying yes. You, you can go on and just, you go into.
It's a county road. Oh, it's a county road.
No, what, the, the point being that uh in twenty fifteen, that was the consideration. Because they were talking about, uh, the council was talking about, um, putting signs where they were allowed and not allowed. And that was back then. Um, and, um, and so we came to the same conversation that you just laid out. Uh, Councilwoman, which is. You, you, you're, you're, in my view, this is a tremendously important safety issue. All vehicles are have safety issues, right? You can have an accident in a, in, in any kind of vehicle you have. But the, the, uh, the vehicles that we're talking about. And the speed at which some folks drive in this town on roads like the Parkway. On roads like we heard recently about the school crossings. You know, those are things that make me pause. So I'm not gonna say tonight that I'm opposed. Because I'd like to see what we can come up with. I'd like to hear more about this. Because I think the reason why we, we decided not to move forward on this, I don't remember exactly, but. You know, uh, Chief Guzman and the Police Department were concerned about this for the reasons that. Chief Deal has, has laid out. Right? And so, in my view, that's an important, uh, that's an important concern. When your police department is telling you, here are the reasons why we don't think this is a good idea. Um, and that was, um, uh, there was a pause because of that. So I don't remember finally. If we stopped and we got, I do remember, um, um, Heidi came back and, and we looked at. Uh, I don't know, it was Coral Gables. Trying to remember which one of the cities was, that said, we can. We can have the golf carts, but you can't drive them on every street in the city.
So where we left off, um, there were a series of discussions on, on this topic in twenty-twenty-two. Um, and ultimately, we, we circulated a memo. There was a presentation made by, as, as Vice Mayor noted by my colleague, uh, Candace. And ultimately, the council said, we're just gonna leave this as is. And if we want to bring it back, which I think is what the councilman's trying to do, we'll, we'll bring it back. Um, obviously, with the passage of time, it's been a year and a half since we've discussed it, um, from what memory serves. And I think that. Um, aside from the safety concerns, I believe there was a concern on. Not just the cost of the signage that was required by the state law at that time, and I don't know if that's changed. Um, but also the cost of the study, because the study that you have is from about ten years ago. And so certainly, your demographics, traffic patterns, things have changed. Um, so I don't know to what extent we would be able to rely on that study ten years later.
Um, do we need a study?
There is a study that's required.
Uh, studies required.
You need to, in order to designate the roads that you can drive the golf carts on. So it was, it was a study, um, which is why I think, uh, the Corodino Group is the one that did the study in twenty fourteen, twenty fifteen. Um, and then there was the added expense of, if you choose to designate roads, then you have to put up the signage for that. Um, I don't know what the cost of signs are for municipalities. Um, I, I think you mentioned a thirty thousand dollar figure. It seems high. I don't know if that's realistic.
That's the number I remember.
Yeah.
It was, it was crazy, but it was.
So, you know, there.
Registration fee could offset that, I guess.
Through the chair. I, I just don't know how much is gonna change here. I, I really don't know how much of our, our city is the same. And all these green areas in the report said that they're allowed and they're safe. I mean, I don't think, I would hope that nobody's going past. I mean, I don't even, I could go thirty miles per hour within the city and I don't, because.
There's only two, two roads that are prohibited for low-speed vehicles, Northwest Thirty-Sixth Street and Lejeune Road. Those are the only two. Everything else in the city is thirty miles per hour, even South River Drive. Can't get to that without crossing Thirty-Sixth Street.
So this was done for, for the golf carts. I don't know how much of this, in, as far as. What the study's gonna, you're saying we need another study? Is there?
I don't know.
Okay. Sorry. I'm not saying that you do or you don't. I'm saying it's something that we need to look at. I don't know if we can rely on a study from ten years ago.
Let's do this. Um, is this something that? Because I mean, we can go round and round and round, and we're not gonna get, I don't see us getting any further. We still don't know. There's a whole bunch of unknowns. So let's do this. Um, you need consensus. All you need is consensus from the council as to whether we would like you to explore this. And come back to us with a little more finite, you know, of this is what's required, this is what's allowed. Um, so is there?
What are we exploring?
Exploring the possibility of having golf carts in the city. Basically, that, right?
Can I just say something?
Councilwoman, that's basically what it is, of, of having golf carts. Do you want to state it not as a motion, but just state what we're exploring is, my understanding is of allowing golf carts to be used on, on our city roads?
May I, there's, there's a big distinction between a golf cart and a low-speed vehicle. That, that's a huge thing. I'm just gonna very quickly tell you. But purchased a golf cart, was told it was street legal by, by the person, you have to. Uh, the process is you have to take it to get it, first of all, you have to trailer it to your house, then you gotta take it somewhere to get it weighed. Which means you gotta put it on a trailer, you gotta take it to get it weighed. Even though the bill of sale says how much it weighed, it doesn't matter. It, the, the DMV is gonna require to you to get it weighed again. Then after you get it weighed, you have to take pictures from every corner showing all of the safety features. It has to have all of the lights. It has to have a horn. You have to have a windshield wiper, even if it's a manual one. I had to drill a hole for a manual windshield wiper. Okay, you have to have the orange triangle. You have to have a lighted.
Through the chair.
You have to have.
What, are you talking about golf carts or LSVs? I'm not talking about LSVs.
But that, that's the thing, is that a golf cart is a different, it's a different thing. Uh, you have to, in order to get a, a tag, you have to have a lighted, uh, tag holder that, that has lights for nighttime. You have to have all the seat belts, you have to have the horn, you have to have all of those things. And then you gotta trailer it to the DMV, you gotta send them pictures. They send it, give you an appointment, and you trail it to the DMV. And then they'll give you like a paper that you could take it to a tag agency to get a tag, and you have to get the insurance.
But we allow those in the city. Those are allowed. So what we're talking about is.
With golf carts, but golf carts means that you don't have all of those safety features.
You can, according to the Corodino Group, the municipality, even in the Florida statutes, I've printed them all out. You can incorporate additional regulations to the types of golf carts that you want driving around in your city.
Okay, so that's what we would be discussing, you know, is this, so the, the, the. What we need consensus on, or to see if we'll get consensus on, is not low-speed vehicles, is. Golf carts, exploring the use of golf carts in the city. And from what you're saying, other cities like Kibiskine.
Yes.
Have it, it's not low, it's not low-speed vehicles, it's golf carts. Okay, so. Are there some, there's some other cities in South Florida that, the Councilwoman Bravo was saying they're using that. Um, do we want to explore? Do we want to ask staff to just come back to us and just tell us the pros and cons? Because we're gonna go round and round and round and. Basically, we really don't have a whole bunch of facts. I mean, we have a general idea. Um, so let's do that. Is there consensus to explore? Um, allowing golf carts in Miami Springs?
Do, do a chairman here.
Yes.
Can we just do it like?
Do, do the chairman, can we just do like a consensual vote, an official vote?
Sure. Okay, you want to, uh, say it and then will somebody second to take that vote?
Heidi, is there a verbiage or type of statement?
It's just your motion today. I make a motion to direct staff to research further.
Okay, I would like to make a motion to address staff to research further the use of golf carts permitted within the city.
I second that motion.
Okay, ready discussion. Let's call the vote.
Vice Mayor Fajah?
No.
Councilman Santin?
Yes.
Councilwoman Bravo?
Yes.
Councilman Vazquez?
No.
Mayor Mitchell?
Yes.
The motion carries.
All right.
Thank you.
Okay, let's move to, um, we are not doing 12A, so we'll move to, let me use the revised agenda. Um, okay, to 12B.
Yes. 12B.
Pressed by Councilman Santin for the staggered ballots.
Okay, I know we've spoken, uh, prior meetings about the four-year terms and how that ensures, uh, uh, continuity in the, in government. So the reason I bring it up for discussion, because I, I like to bring up, uh, staggering. It's because I really believe that, uh, experience, uh, you know, um, government officials, uh, should remain in office, uh, especially during the periods where, uh, new ones could become, uh, elected. So, uh, you know, and also, you know, you have a sudden shift in, in, in policy when you have all five going out at the same time. And I think like the Councilman Fajah had mentioned before, um, you know, advice from, was it League of Cities? Where they recommended, you know, how to govern and their suggestions on what's the best way. And obviously pretty overwhelming, high percentage, again. They mentioned obviously the four-year terms that we've already discussed that earlier. And, but also staggering was a, a good, important part of it. And it just brings stability, you know, even to administrations, you know, that obviously, uh, you, you feel a little more comfort with, what's going on and what the, uh, existing, uh, city council is doing. And it takes time. So I believe the four-year term should be a, a for vote. Uh, but I believe, I believe it needs to be added with staggering terms. And of course that's going to come up with a sacrifice or a sacrifice, but some seats among us have to, uh, have to, uh, take a two-year term going into the next election. That way we can start the process from there. Um, you know, as we know, this proposal there that, uh, I suggested only for some conversations we've had up here, uh, that certain seats could have that two, two-year term and then the rest of them, four-year terms, and then everybody will catch up at that point.
Any comments? I just want to say, um, I, um, I'm not for staggered terms. I think the instability for this staff is the reason that I proposed the four-year term so that there's some continuity, the staff, for the residents, for the projects that are being done. Um, staggered terms defeats that. It defeats the other reason that I brought up the suggestion, which was the savings in, um, election savings to the city. Instead of having elections every two years, we'd have elections every three years. Right now the cost, Eric, he said is about 30,000. Um, that's a significant amount. That's, you know, every two years we're spending, but it's not, th- those are the actual tangible cost. There are a whole bunch of other costs in staff time, in resources, and delaying things until we see, you know, what happens with the new council every two years. And also personally, and, and again, I'm not affected by this, I am termed out. So, um, this does not impact me on a personal basis. But, um, for those of you that are, you know, running again or intend to run again, you know, every 18 months to start preparing for an election, there's a cost involved with, you know, running an election. There's a, um, so I don't see any benefit of staggered terms. I've heard, you know, oh, there's the possibility that, you know, the whole council, uh, could be new. You know, as a result of an election, if that happens, it's never happened to my knowledge in the history of, of Miami Springs, or at least that I'm aware of. But if that were to happen, that everyone in this council was voted out and all new people were voted in and, and they were running again, they weren't termed out, then there was probably a good reason for that. And it probably meant that, um, you know, that we needed, uh, new council members. So there's something, there's a default set in with that anyway of, um, it's unlikely to happen. Um, anyone that's running for council, I think, understands the inordinate amount of time that it takes to do this job, to, you know, to try to do it, to, you know, to fill the needs of, of what it requires. And, um, they're willing to sacrifice that time to do it. Um. So anyway, that's, that's my thought on the staggered terms. I, I just see no benefit of it. Um, right now, if you think about the situations, at least that I've been on the council for the past four elections, um, yeah, it's, you know, there's someone on here, usually that has remained, it's never been a new council. But, um, that's unlikely to happen.
Good chair. You mentioned, uh, Mayor, the, uh, cost. And the truth is that we're going to put this to the people's vote, right? The truth is, then the vote should, we should amend this to put the vote, the people, April or November. If cost savings is such a big deal, let the people speak. Put it on a charter. You, do we want April or do we want November? Let them speak about the cost.
Is there, because, because the cost is significant savings in November. You said is, uh, significant savings. Okay. Um, okay, and that, and that's a valid point. If we're trying to save on cost. I personally feel, um, I am against putting it in November for the reason when it's with a presidential election. Um, elections from, I can tell you from all the, and I'm on the board, Florida, uh, League of Mayor's Board. And I can tell you from talking to elected officials across the state of Florida, it becomes so partisan, the issues that matter to this city are lost. All that matters is, are you Republican or Democrat? And I'm voting for you on that. And as we know from being here, the issues that we discuss have nothing to do with partisan. They're not partisan. They're issues that are local, that are important to our community. And pretty much even though we have different parties, I, you know, on here, nobody votes against those lines. You know, we vote based on the issues. Um, and I think that our community is best served by that. There's no one that's going to convince me that, um, that, um, doing elections base, basing elections base, you know, so that, uh, people get elected based on their, um, party affiliation is in the best interest of our city. And anything that encourages that, um, which doing them with presidential elections, um, will certainly do that. Um, is not in the best interest of our community.
Yep. So I'll, I'll reiterate what, what I brought up the last time we had this discussion. Um, the Model City Charter, which hundreds of municipalities across the country use to help them, you know, it gives you a guide for how to best, uh, run a city. Uh, not to mention, there are 35 municipal bodies in Miami-Dade County, including the county when they, they are the municipality in, uh, unincorporated Miami-Dade County. Of those 35 municipal bodies, only three cities, El Portales, Surfside, and Miami Springs do it the way we do it. Everybody else does four-year and the vast majority of them do it staggered. And that's, uh, also what is recommended in the Model City Charter, uh, which is to do four-year terms staggered. My understanding is that in terms of cost, it costs us about $30,000 to run a standalone election in April. Uh, which means that if, uh, we stagger it, that's $60,000 every four years. My understanding is that if we piggyback on the general municipal elections in November, then it costs us $10,000. So I feel like there is cost savings there if we stagger it. Uh, it's clear that the majority of people, uh, stagger, have four-year terms and, and stagger it. And as, as much as I had, and I had mentioned the last time that I initially, my initial thought was like, well, it's going to be partisan in November. And then people told me like, it gets pretty partisan during a presidential election. But at the end of the day, these positions are nonpartisan. So the people that get the ballot and go Republican or Democrat down the line, when it gets to the names of our council people, uh, there isn't an R and D next to the name. Uh, you get better voter turnout in November. And if it's, you're getting, if it's costing you a third of the cost, then, then I feel like staggering it and doing it in November, uh, and having four-year terms is the way to go. I will address, uh, there were, was an opinion piece in the media about, uh, you know, this is something that was voted on in 2012, which obviously was 12 years ago. Um, but something very similar was proposed, uh, in that opinion piece. They also said that like, uh, you know, we should keep it at two-year terms. That's what they have in the, the US Congress. I would remind everybody that that is one of the, uh, big complaints about the US Congress is that our, our representatives are running every two years and having to raise money. Whereas like our senators have six-year terms. Uh, but another huge dis- distinction, because you could say, hey, our US Congress, uh, people, they can make it work in two years. They don't have to comply with sunshine laws like we do. They can talk about things, they can bounce ideas off each other, they can caucus. We cannot. We have to run our city business on every second and fourth Monday of the month. And as much as it's great, we have yard of the month and we have like all kinds of like pomp and circumstance that we do. But we don't have a lot of time and we cannot speak about city business except on the second and fourth Monday of every month. So I would put that, uh, it's a spurious argument to say, uh, you know, like, oh, well, you know, the, it's good for the US Congress and they do it in two-year terms. Yeah, but they don't have, they're not hamstrung like we are, that we can't talk city business except publicly here on the dais. Uh, so I do believe that four-year terms, uh, help. Uh, I do feel that it should be staggered. You could still get pretty significant cost savings. It, it costs a third of the time if you piggyback with the, uh, with the, uh, municipal elections in November. Uh, I feel like that's, uh, that's the way to go.
Do the chair.
Yes, ma'am. I mean, I, I feel the same that I, that I did before. I'm all about the two years. I don't know if it's like a small-city syndrome. But if I were to entertain a four-year term, it'll probably be staggered. But I understand, and, and at a November election. Uh, that's a, that's my fine medium, but I know that you guys are set on.
So let's do this. Um, I guess we'll do the same thing, a motion of what we'd like to see on the ballot.
Okay.
Um.
Okay, I'll make a motion to, uh.
Wait, one second. Let's get Heidi's input on how we can.
In light? Light of our timing, um, as you know, July 26th is the last day that we can send a proposed charter question to this county supervisor of elections. Um, so my intent is to bring you a resolution for you to vote on that would send proposed questions to the electorate. So the questions would be, the first would be, um, moving from two-year terms to four-year terms. And that's based on the action that you took two meetings ago. Um, and then tonight, the direction would be to add to that resol- it's one resolution. So to have various questions, one, two to four years, then whether the terms should be staggered. And then whether it sounds like there might be consensus on whether the election should be moved from April to November. So three questions, four-year terms, staggered, November election.
I, I would not be in favor of staggering unless it is in November, because then you lose the cost.
And I'm not in favor of a November election. So I guess, um, and I'm not in favor of staggering. But nonetheless, I guess what we need is a motion of what we're going to vote on. Let's see how it goes and that'll give you direction on. And, and I think the other point that I'd like to discuss just briefly is when you were talking about staggered and four-year elections, I know in the briefings that you gave us, Heidi, of how you worked it out, there's going to be, we'd be voting for at the next election, some council members to have a two-year term and some council members to have a four-year term.
Correct.
It'll be highly confusing to our residents as to, we're voting for, you know, this person for a two-year term, but this one we're voting, if, you know, whoever's in that seat gets a four-year term. I can't even imagine how that would play out with our residents, that kind of confusion. So, um.
Not to mention, I think that would be unfair for candidates.
Well, totally unfair for candidates, yes.
For a two-year term.
That's to say, you know, let's just, I mean, we'd have the eenie-meenie-manny-mo, you know, pick how, but anyway. Um, again, we can discuss this over and over forever, but I think ultimately we want, we want to know is what direction to give. Heidi, of what to, whether we're going to give a direction of putting something on the ballot um, for residents to decide and what that would be. So do you want to make?
It will come back to, you need to vote on the resolution. Um, so you'll have another chance to see the three questions as they would be presented to the voters as well as the actual updates to the charter itself, should those amendments pass.
But you would be preparing the resolution, so we're giving you a direction to spend time.
Yes.
Preparing a resolution. So let's.
Mayor, I would only be in favor of four-year terms, staggered, November. I, I don't feel like it needs to be three different, uh, in my, in my opinion. I don't think that it should be three different questions. I, I think that what makes the most sense and would work, in my opinion, would be doing four years, but doing it staggered and doing it in November so you get the cost savings.
Okay, and I'm only in favor of four-year terms, not staggered. Um, I prefer April. I would be, you know, commendable to, um, November. But no staggering. So you can see that there's a whole bunch of like, this is a cafeteria plan where it's like. So what do you suggest? With the lady of the, and, and how about, Victor, let's, 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 I think that might be easier. Let's each say what you're in favor of.
Staggered, then we have to do two years for a couple of seats, right, to deal with that whole question.
If we do staggered, it's going to be, my understanding from what Heidi said is some people will be running for two years and some will be running for four.
Mayor, if, just to try to move things along, let's just take a motion and, and see what happens. And we already have the, the approval to proceed with four years, not staggered.
Good idea, Jesse.
Let's just.
Go on a motion for this.
No, no, i- if whoever wants to make a motion, uh, uh, make the motion and see how it, how it goes. And if it passes, it passes, if it fails.
Already have a motion to go to consider to allow, and again, for those that are listening, I want to make it very clear, we're not deciding anything. All we're just, all we're deciding is whether to give our voters, our residents, an opportunity to vote on something on the ballot in November. And then the residents will decide. That's all. We're not making any, um, you know, changes to.
So I'll make a motion to, uh, direct, uh, council to, uh, draft a resolution that states that, uh, in the charter, we will, uh, amend it with a, uh, four-year term staggering in a November election.
All, all in one question.
Yes.
Okay, is there a second?
Second. No, well, no big, well, that's, that's what.
This is a really important point.
This, this is, and that's why I want to make sure that we get it.
Okay.
We can have this, like I've shared with all of you, we can do this a million ways. Do you want to send to the voters one question that calls for all three of those things? Or do you want to send multiple questions?
I, I, I think, and I don't want to speak for them, but from what I'm hearing is if they can't do it all, if all of it can't be done, then at least some of, that's what I'm hearing from some. That's, it, that's, and then that'll be voted on here right now. And if it is, then.
But I think there was consensus on the four-year term.
I'm actually, I want to go, uh, I take back what I said. I'm going to stick to my two.
Okay, so.
A motion is a second.
We have a motion for, a motion with three items on there, right? Of the, right, okay. And you have a second. All right, let's call the vote on that. Three questions. Oh, further discussion, did you have?
I want to hear the motion again.
Okay.
Okay, motion to, uh, direct, uh, council to, uh, put on the charter an amendment to a four-year term staggering in a November election.
Okay.
As three separate questions or as one question?
What?
One question.
Okay, I have a.
Yes, sir.
Question about the staggering. Because, uh, some, some, uh, um, positions can be four-year off the bat and a couple of them will be two years. Right? That's according to the, what, uh, George had proposed. And I would like to change that group four be a two-year term and be one of the two years. That's all I'm saying.
But there's a bunch of ways to skin the cat if that's what we decide to do. It doesn't have to.
Yes, let's just, Heidi, if that's, if the motion passes, then you would come back with.
Okay, just.
I'll, I'll bring you proposals for which one.
Which way? Which way?
Yeah, if there's direction, and I would love that upfront, so I'm not giving you a million iterations. If there's consensus that if you're going to have the four-year staggered terms, that you would want to stagger one seat over another. And, you know, if you know already that you would want Victor's seat to be, I'm sorry, Councilman Vasquez's seat to be two-year terms, and then leave to me what the other one would be.
The two-year term is one time two-year term, not ongoing.
Actually, we're, we're, we're talking about two, is what we had said the last time. It's just that, um, my suggestion would be that, but.
But going after that, then it would be four years.
The next one would be, next time around, be four years. Correct.
It's just to create the staggering. And there's a lot of cities, by the way, that have taken this issue up in the last decade, um, including, and I, I know I've shared this example with some of you. Uh, the, the village of Pinecrest has created staggered terms. Um, and in that case, their, their mayor, I believe, um, instead of doing a two or four-year term, they went with a six-year term. Um, so it just depends on each city. So this is, I, I think ultimately what you're doing tonight is.
You get direction, you'll come back. Yes.
So we have the vote on the table.
Okay, so we have a, a motion, a second, any more discussion? Call the vote, please.
Vice Mayor Fahut?
Yes.
Councilman Santin?
Yes.
Councilwoman Bravo?
No.
Councilman Vasquez?
Yes.
Mayor Mitchell?
No.
The motion carries three to two.
Okay. All right, so let's move to. Item. Um, let's see, is that mine now? Yeah.
Twelve, twelve C.
Maybe it looks better. Okay, um, and this one, um, I'd just like to request, um, I think with the Centennial Committee, you know, we created the Centennial Committee a year ago. They've been really diligent, working hard, meeting every year, every month. Um, there's a lot of projects, a lot of things, and, um, my understanding is at the last meeting, and I wasn't there, there was some sort of, I guess, um, negative, uh, feeling from them that they're bringing, proposing a lot of stuff and they're not seeing movement. And they feel kind of like they're floating. And I think that the best thing, and I understand they're working with the city staff, but there needs to be a liaison from the council to work with them, to be on the, like we've done in other projects, that, you know, one council member is actually the one that works with the city strats, uh, staff, and develops the plan of how you proceed or reaches out or whatever. So that's what I'd like to propose, is that we create a liaison, one of the council members to be a liaison to work with the Centennial Committee. Um, and that would be the liaison between the Centennial Committee and the city staff and other as needed.
Mayor, we, in the past, when we first came up with it, uh, Councilman Vasquez was the liaison. And I know that that was interrupted when he, uh, had to resign to run for, uh, the commission seat. Um, but if he's willing to do it, I would happily nominate him to, uh, pick up where he left off.
Councilman?
Um, I don't have a problem with that, but I think Councilman Santin has been going to almost all the meetings, he's almost.
Well, this would require going to all the meetings for sure.
Yeah, yeah.
And then following through with, you know, all of that.
Yeah, I mean, it's not going to change whether I get voted here by the dais or not. Uh, I will still involve, there's too much involvement already. So my, my activity will not change.
Okay, but you have been very active and, um, Councilman Vasquez, with all due respect, if Councilman Santin is willing to do it, I think.
Yeah, I'm surprised with, I, I believe, I have to kind of calm them on the cases, because they always think that things just move so fast.
No, I know, but you have been really actively involved up till now, and I think that's what the Centennial Committee needs, is, you know, that they, something that, you know, knows, they don't feel like they're starting over at each meeting and not, and, and so, um, if you're, yes, sir.
All right. I, I appreciate, uh, Councilman Fahut's vote of confidence. Uh, but I think that Councilman Santin has been there more than I have and, and has a real pulse of things. Doesn't mean that I'm not going to attend whenever I go, but I know that he's been there. Um, and he's been doing this kind of non, non-appointed level, so. And he's just, I would defer to him and let's make it efficient.
Okay, if, I don't think we need a vote on that. We're just naming you as the liaison, Heidi, or do we need something?
I think we both want others, but I would go ahead and just make the motion.
Yeah, make a motion, okay.
Motion to appoint, uh, Councilman Santin as the, uh, council member who is the liaison for the Centennial Committee.
Second.
Okay, any discussion? Call the vote, please.
Vice Mayor Fahut?
Yes.
Councilman Santin?
Yes.
Councilwoman Bravo?
Yes.
Councilman Vasquez?
Yes.
Mayor Mitchell?
Yes, the motion carries.
All right, thank you. Um, the next agenda item is a request by me, um, to discuss, um, permeable driveways. And I think this can be relatively quick. Um, we have, as you know, driveways have become part of the aesthetic of a home. You know, in the past, it was like you had your home and you cared about how that looked, and the driveway was just the driveway. That, you know, certainly is no longer the case. Um, you know, the driveways continue to get more and more, um, attractive, you know, if nothing else, but also bigger, and take up more of the yard space. Um, and while it's nice that we have nice driveways to go with the homes, um, one of the things is, um, permeability. The more driveways we build, the less perm- if they're just concrete driveways or other non-permeable driveways, um, that doesn't allow the rainwater to soak through the grass like it normally would, and go down into our aquifer. Instead, it goes into our, uh, roads and, um, you know, causes, um, flood or, or aggravates, or trib- uh, contributes to the flooding issues. So the other thing is that, um, we, um, have in our code that you cannot use your grass in front of your house. You can use the swale for parking your cars, but you're, you cannot park your cars on the grass in front of your house. That's your yard. And, um, some people have been doing that, and I know code enforcement is going to be enforcing that, um, because it's not just an aesthetic issue, it's a safety issue. You know, at the recent meeting I brought up about the hedges and how I want those enforced, and I want to make sure that, you know, if we're really serious about being a bike and, and pedestrian-friendly city, then safety is an inherent part of that, and we need to make sure that, you know, when you're walking down our sidewalks, um, you can see vehicles pulling in and out of their driveways and they can see you. But if, and we look out for, you know, you're walking and without even thinking about it, you see a driveway and you're kind of looking out for it, right? But if a car is not using a driveway, if they're parked in the grass and they're next to a hedge, there's no way for you to even anticipate that. And they're pulling out, and if they don't see you, um, you know, um, it could be a disaster. So we need to have a way for driveways to continue to be built, and in some cases for people to build more driveways. Um, but they should be permeable. Um, and what I'd like to suggest is just the council's, um, consensus for us to explore permeable driveways as, uh, some, adding to our code, um, to facilitate that if someone is, is going to build a driveway, um, that they consider permeable alternatives, and there are a lot. I just found out there's permeable concrete. I didn't even know there was such a thing. And then I found out from Tammy that actually our whole project on, um, East Drive is permeable, which is that, you know, fantastic. I'm so happy to hear that. Um, so in addition to that, what we did a few years back is we, um, for people, residents that wanted to put in solar panels in their homes, which is a sustainability, um, initiative, that we waived the permit fee. So part of this exploration would be in either waiving or reducing the permit fee for driveways that have a certain percentage permeability. Um, so all I'm asking here is just consensus to, um, bring something, a resolution to the council that would explore how we can tweak our code to encourage, you know, if someone's putting in a driveway, um, that, you know, that they use permeable materials. This improves, it's a resiliency and sustainability measure, and there are a lot of attractive ways to do this. And, um, with the thought of gravel, that, you know, somebody thinks there are, you know, if gravel were to be allowed, and I don't even know if, you know, it'd be allowed or not, we'd have to see, it would have to be a very attractive way of doing it, not just you pour, you know, some gravel out over your grass. So do I have consensus from the council to explore permeable driveways and bring back something?
I agree.
To the chair.
Yes, sir.
I think, well, obviously, when we get, come back with that, we should have some allowance, because there's calculations on previous.
Yes, yes, and so it would be certain.
To give them an allowance of some sort.
Percentage too, like, if, you know, and we probably won't even cover, you know, state all the materials, but if someone, you know, a contractor has, can show, you know, this material is, you know, this percentage permeable, and look, a hundred percent permeable isn't likely with any driveway. But, you know, what we're aiming here is for some permeability, because it, we benefit from it. It's less flooding, you know, for our neighbors. It's, you know, um, it benefits across the way. And, um, and it encourages people to, you know, to take steps to, to improve their driveways.
To the chair, Mayor, now that you, you brought this discussion up, I want to piggyback on another, um, item for, for code. I know, I mean, they should be exercising it, but I know that when we make, um, additions to our home, if we increase the living area as far as bedroom space, you're supposed to, based on the amount of bedrooms you have in your home, you should be incorporating parking, uh, usage for the occupancy of the home. So if you went from a two-one, uh, what do you call it, tenant parking, that you park front and back, now you would have to provide, uh, it, it's part of it. I mean, when I built out my house, I, I was required, before I built out, to make a, at, at that time, we thought the way that we did it, but we had to do a circular driveway to accommodate a four-bedroom home. So I think, um, we should also make sure that, that code is, is really, um, executing that, that ordinance that we already have, because I think that will trickle down with the additions that are happening, which is great. I love to see these houses being built. We have so many nice houses coming up. It's really exciting, um, to make sure that they're also, also executing driveways according to, to living occupancy. That's super important.
And I know one of the things I don't want to look at too, while we're doing that, and with the driveways, is making sure that, um, you know, that when driveways are allowed, re, new driveways or whatever, that there's that percentage of, and I'm confused as to whether it's forty or fifty, because I've heard thirty, forty, fifty, um, you know. Yes, uh, that's not built out, that's not driveway. Um, and perhaps in this ordinance, if it's permeable, you might be, as an incentive, you might be allowed to get a little more driveway, because it's permeable, you know, or if it's highly permeable material. I don't know, we'll explore all those options. But, um, with your permission, I'll come back to you with something like that. I think it'll be a, a good, um, resiliency initiative for our community. It benefits all of us.
Hey, for your, um, your knowledge, it's old construction is fifty percent and new construction is forty percent.
Okay, that forty percent that can be built on or that needs to remain?
That can become concrete.
That can become, okay.
Driveway area.
Mm-hmm.
I think that's good.
Okay, um, all right, then we'll move to the next agenda item, which is twelve E. And that, I just wanted to kind of update, um, the council, and I'll quickly give you, um, for the purpose of the record, you know, some background. Um, I know since I've been on the council, and this is going back several councils before me and mayors before me have tackled this issue of, um, what's called the TDT, Tourist Development Act, uh, taxes, or what we refer to as the bed taxes, which means that hotels, um, there's state law that, um, uh, the state enacted, that, um, there's a certain taxes, tourist development taxes, that hotels must collect on their rooms. And then that money gets sent, even though it's collected in the hotel and a municipality, the municipality does not see it. It gets, uh, uh, collected by the hotel and submitted to the county, and the county use that, uses that for tourist development. There's a whole broad range of, you know, it goes through the Greater Miami Convention and Visitors Bureau. It goes to convention, build conventions, build sports arenas, um, a whole bunch of things. It also goes to homeless trust and to prevent domestic violence, um, and to fund City of Miami facilities. Get that. Um, so anyway, um, I've been for a long time, as, as have other members, um, you know, um, asking for us to get a fair share of those revenues. It just makes sense for a community like ours that has so many. We have over twenty hotels in our small three-square-mile, um, community. And back in twenty twenty, early twenty twenty, our then-representative, now Senator, um, Brian Avila, did a fantastic job of getting a bill. It passed through the House and it got all the way to the last minute on the Senate, where we would have been getting some of those revenues back to the municipalities as water projects, you know, for flood control and other things. Um, unfortunately, um, at the last minute, it wasn't passed at the, um, Senate, and that was in early February, early March of twenty twenty. Two weeks later, the pandemic hit. So after that, I mean, there was no reason to bring this up, as the hotels were closed and all. But, um, in twenty twenty-two, I started beating the drums again, because we're back to, um, you know, the hotels have full occupancy all across. And, um, the, the bottom line is this, um, we don't get any return or very minimal return on the, uh, revenues that are collected from our hotels, which as of last year were six-point-three million. And as of March of this year, um, half of the fiscal year is already at three-point-two million, three-point-three million. Um, and we're only at half of the fiscal year. So, um, in early twenty twenty-three, Commissioner Cabrera and, um, the Chair, um, Oliver Gilbert, passed a county ordinance where they directed the Greater Miami Convention and Visitors Bureau to, um, spend more resources on non-coastal cities, on smaller cities like ours that aren't, you know, the, the trendy, um, tourist spots. And, um, and also to spend money on, um, um, what do you call it, sex trafficking, to reduce sex trafficking. Now, sex trafficking is, in talking to Chief Deal, is less than one percent of our, the issues of the calls that our police respond to, um, to the hotels. And as you know, forty percent of, of the police calls go to our hotels, and that's where the, um, that's where we need a fair share of assistance. You know, the, the money with the bed taxes is to promote tourism. It seems to me, um, that part of promoting tourism to an area, to Miami-Dade County, should be providing for the safety of those tourists. Something goes hand in hand. And any tourist, and you know that, and, and I've said this, any tourist, no matter how wonderful their experience is, is my, in Miami-Dade County, if they're in a hotel and they get their, um, purse stolen, or their room broken into, or their car broken into, or whatever, that ruins the whole experience. That's what they remember. So, um, it seems that, you know, that it's really important for the, for that effort to be made to provide for the safety of our tourists. Nonetheless, where we are now, the Greater Miami Convention and Visitors Bureau has reached out to us, and, um, J.C. and Tammy and I, and Shannon, our public information officer, have had two meetings with them, um, to, um, discuss what they're going to be doing, investment in our community. And based on what they've been instructed to do, they've made, um, a lot of commitments, um, verbally. We'll see if they come through on them. I'm going to be sharing with you, this is a, but I'll have, um, uh, I'll have Erica send it to you. It's, um, a worksheet that, um, that they provided to us of what they plan to do in Miami Springs, to promote Miami Springs, so that we're getting revenues from, uh, I mean, that we're getting a return from, a significant return from the revenues that are being collected in our city. And as you can see, it's several pages, and they're going to, um, they've, they've said they're going to have a very significant involvement. Um, we said, wonderful, let's see it, make it happen. Um, and I'll also be sharing this page with you, which is just a breakdown. This is from twenty twenty-one to twenty-two, but it shows you a breakdown of how the TDT taxes are. I just think it's important for the whole council to, you know, that's why I'm summarizing this, but for all of us to be on board and, and have this, you know, knowledge of where we are. Um, I'm going to encourage you that if you have any, um, activities, events, uh, cultural events, activities, anything that you can think of that should be funded by, um, the Greater Miami Convention and Visitors Bureau, they've made this, this commitment to, um, help with our events, um, and also to promote, to widely promote our hotels and our businesses. And you'll see from this whole worksheet, everything on here is, is what they've said they're going to do. Please reach out to J.C. and work with him on that. But any thoughts that you have on things that, you know, that we should tap into them? Um, be sure to reach out to J.C. so that you can work together with, um, the Greater Miami Convention and Visitors Bureau. Um, I'm sorry, Mayor, okay. And that's pretty much it. I just wanted to be sure, um, you know, we were all, um, you're all informed of, of where we are with that now. I'm, I'm the eternal optimist, talking about at the Optimist Club. I'm always the internal optimist. I try to see good. I try to see good in every situation and um, you know, moving forward. I'm for this, let's see what, how we can um, promote and advance our businesses and our community.
Feels like we've been at this a long time. This is good news. I mean, I think this is really good news and I appreciate your leadership in this because we've talked about it in a lot of different ways, even made some threats and and so forth. So the idea that these folks got the message and they found a way in their own realm of things to do something for Miami Springs, like they do for, I think that's a, it's a win-win situation. Um, as you cited, uh, and I read, uh, I look at those pie charts that, that the the chief sends and, you know, it's 41, 40%, you know, while police time is still going there. So however we can move this around to benefit the city of Miami Springs, to maybe get some money of that as a grant for the police department and organizations. I mean, I can see Curtis mentioned be benefiting from this, you know, the the idea of promoting.
Centennial Committee.
All the civic organizations, including the Centennial, by the way. So I think this is all good.
Yes, and even our Fourth of July celebration, our city events, um, I've spoken to JC about, you know, pursuing sponsorship for those, you know, all these um, city events that we do. Um, they're certainly done in other cities and.
I think this is a major breakthrough, to be honest.
And and keep in mind, because you might hear this, you know, that there's other cities, you know, that they're trying to help. No other city in reality is in our situation.
That's right.
We're unique because um, when the state passed this TDT, there were three cities in Miami Dade County that were already collecting their own hotel bed taxes. And so they were um, exempt from this requirement. One is Miami Beach. Uh, the other is Surfside and the other one is, I believe, Ball Harbor. Miami Beach is probably the only city like us, you know, that we can compare ourselves to that has probably the same per square foot number of hotels, you know, they're much larger than we are and obviously have more hotels, but we're a three square mile city. So the thing to keep in mind is, there's no other city in reality that is in our situation that we provide um, really significant, um, uh, we're a really significant engine for the tourism industry in that we have all these hotels that service the airport, the cruise industry and Miami Dade County. We're in the center of it and we're providing that vital, um, and we love our hotels. Don't get me wrong, we love our hotels, we love our businesses here. What we need is return to see a significant return for the revenues collected in the bed taxes. And that's the bottom line of it. And however that comes back to us, um, that's fine. And there's no other city that, you know, they might have a hotel or two, but based on their size, um, you know, they don't compare. Okay, so thank you so much for listening to that, but I wanted to be sure, you know, that we were kind of all on the same page with that.
Do the chair mayor really quick before we move off topic. Heidi, if you can educate me a little bit, maybe you know, maybe you don't, I, I don't know. But at the beginning of time, uh, how did the Florida Department of Revenue just come up with a local option, like the the transient tax and assign it to be collected to the county? Like, how was that formulated? Like, okay, we're gonna collect transient tax and it's gonna go to the county instead of Miami Springs?
It was a state.
My understanding is that it's a function of state law. Um, and that's why only three cities have the ability to do, collect the tax themselves. So cities can't just come up with taxes and decide, you know, I want to issue a tax on this. So our municipal powers are limited by the Florida Constitution and state law on our taxing abilities. So that structure that you're asking about is based on state law.
And those three cities that are allowed to um, take in their, collect those transient taxes, what made them so special?
I can, I can answer that question is when that law passed, when that became law, each city was allowed the opportunity to opt in to collect this. Apparently at some point Miami Springs decided not to. And they, you had one crack at the nut and so that's where we are right now. And I know a number of other cities had under the same circumstances that back then, they may not have had a lot of hotels. Plus, there was a lot of work that needed to be done because you had to set up your own tourism board and.
So it's too late to exercise.
Now Surfside and Miami Beach and Ball Harbor, which are the three that have this, have had this. I can speak as to Surfside because I sat for their tourist board for many years. They've had it since about the 1950s, if not earlier. Um, and I believe the same for Ball Harbor. So it's, it's very, like, when you talk about, when you asked from the beginning of time, it's sort of like the beginning of time for those cities, for sure.
But you know, and that's why it was so important, what then Representative Avila had brought at the state legislature is a bill that would allow across the board, all cities to take a a percentage of, from the revenues that are collected within that city, a percentage of that would come back as to the city for water projects, which would be flood control and those kind of things. Because it's not just police calls, you know, we repair those roads that lead to the hotels. We do a lot of services and that should just be part of it. But nonetheless, um, that requires um, you know, a state law right now. Um, this is what's happening and we're going to um, um, look forward as as we told um, the Greater Miami Convention and Visitors Bureau, um, the the president and the chief operating officer um, that we met with um, and their team, um, okay, make it happen. You say you can do all this in our city, let's, let's do it.
So you see Brian Avila's bill, um, it's passed, correct?
It didn't, oh, that was, that was in, it didn't pass the House, it passed the House, right? It passed the House of Representatives, it didn't pass the House. And it, I mean, I'm sorry, didn't pass the Senate, it passed the House, it didn't pass the Senate. Had it passed the Senate at that time, we would already be getting those revenues back. But the reason that I, I said that was in 20, early 2020, the pandemic hit right after that. So the world changed after that anyway, so there was really no reason for us to pursue, you know, this when the hotels are.
Would have likely been vetoed by the governor because you remember that that, that, that session, he vetoed a number of things because the pandemic had started and.
Right, right, and it was a whole different world within two months. So it was a wonderful, but it was exemplary effort that um, he did, um, you know, for his community on that. And um, we'll see how this works. And make sure that, you know, that we're getting. But but again, I want to make sure a fair share of of these taxes. And and again, I want to encourage all of you to consider that if there's things that you're thinking about or whatever, to reach out to JC so he can work with them.
When I, okay. But when I started talking about this in council a few years back, um, um, William corrected me on something. And he said that the hotels do pay taxes for Miami Springs, not that they don't pay any taxes. Um, but but he and I sat down in his office and he, we went over the numbers. And then we went over the hours the police are there. And, you know, it was, it was, um, they were, they, they didn't even cover half of the cost of the police. So that number is still, they're still around 40%, that's there. So it's not that they don't pay any tax, it's the kind of uh, investments, we'll use that word, in the community that they can and should be making. I think this is a, this is a great step forward.
And I've been, you know, this past two years, I've, you know, uh, been on the um, League of Cities, the Taxation and Finance Committee, you know, trying to bring awareness to other cities that they might not even realize, they might only have a few hotels, but nonetheless, that's revenues that are being collected that they're not seeing any, you know, and so it really is, the more awareness we can bring of this issue, so that it's not just us complaining, you know, or it's, it's us. And you know, and I think that's important and I've been trying very hard on the statewide level with the League of Mayors and, you know, other things of bringing attention to that because there's a lot, I'm sure that there are a lot of municipalities all over Florida, small municipalities like ours that, you know, have a few hotels, in our case, we have a lot. But um, you know, that they are, would like to see a a fair share back to them too, however it comes. Yeah, okay, so let's move on, um, yes.
As the chair, what Councilman Vasquez was mentioning about taxes, obviously the tax assessments that the hotels. And the reason that it's short changes because we also have talked to JC about being a little bit more aggressive with the uh, property operator's office, a lot of them have taken advantage, they have the right, but we also have the right to contest, allow them to keep the taxes low. And uh, so that does that one, there's other properties out there that uh, you know, we gotta be a little bit more active on our side. And uh, because, you know, they have their own people fighting for those uh, those reductions in taxes. Uh, so we have to be on top of them because a lot, many of them are not justified and they should be higher, so. We'll continue.
Thank you, George. And then we'll move to the next agenda item, which is an update by our city manager on the proposal for the impact fees.
Yes, Mayor, um, at the last meeting, the council directed me to get a proposal for impact, to do an impact these studies so we can establish impact fees. Um, I don't have it yet, but I, I'm told that I'll have it this week so I can present it at the next commission meeting. Next council meeting, excuse me, not commission, sorry.
Okay, thank you, JC. Okay, so um, we'll go to reports and recommendations from our city attorney.
Uh, Mayor and Council, earlier this afternoon, I I sent you two emails today. One was saying we didn't have an order from the judge on the Form Six litigation. And then just before I was going to head out to this meeting, we got really great news that the cities, our petition, our our motion for a preliminary injunction in the federal case uh, was granted. Um, so there is a 30, about a 30-page order, uh, in case you're interested. I did send it to you all so you can read what the judge's analysis was. We're very happy with the order. The order provides that the State Commission on Ethics is not able to, they are enjoined, they are prevented from enforcing the law that was passed, uh, requiring municipal officials to file a Form Six come this July 1st. It's not really relevant for you, but some of your colleagues who may be uh, qualifying in other cities this week, it's really important for them because as you know, the Form Six is required uh, to qualify. So uh, we're really happy to to share that news and we'll keep you uh, up to speed. And we'll also share with you, you know, what next.
Thank you.
Thank you so much. That is really great news, Heidi. Okay, city manager?
Uh, yes, Mayor, really quick, just one thing. I just wanted to acknowledge the, the police department and uh, and their staff for, for setting up the, the awards banquet that was held on, on Friday night. I do want to commend all the officers that were recognized and the officer of the year. And um, I was really impressed and and I have to say that in, for all the communities I've worked for, uh, this, this police department is uh, special and they love this city that they work for. Half of them live here, so which, um, but I've, I've haven't seen that kind of dedication. And and to have one of the officers go out and recruit and to to bring officers in and the amount that we saw today just shows that they believe in the city, they believe in the product. Because in order for you to be a salesperson, you gotta believe in what you're selling. And they went out there and they sold it because they, they truly believe in 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 this community and in this, the, this city. And so they really meant a lot to me and I just wanted to say that.
Thank you, JC. Tammy?
I just wanted to remind everybody that there's the uh, Board on Parks and Parkway's meeting uh, this Tuesday, June 11th at uh, 6:00 PM to discuss the uh, the tree protection ordinance. Also, it is now that summertime has started, it's Popsicle Wednesday. So families may stop by and get a free popsicle uh, with their children um, every Wednesday during the summer between six and seven um, at the aquatic, aquatic center. Um, and then also the, uh, there's a Father's Day promotion, uh, Sunday, June 16th from 12 to 6 in recognition of the coolest pops in town. Miami Springs uh, and BG Fathers can swim free with a paid admission of a child. Then also we have the summer, summer family fun Friday nights, uh, pool nights are June 21st and July 12th from 6:00 PM to 8:30 PM at the Aquatic Center. And then field uh, field nights are June 28th and July 19th from 6:00 PM to 8:30. And there'll be cornhole and music and more at the Recreation Department. Also, uh, we have our Fourth of July celebrations. Uh, Wednesday, July 3rd, we have our uh, car show and our parade and our pool party uh, is on, uh, and then we have the Fourth of July fireworks on July 4th. That is all.
Mayor, I have one last thing and as you and the rest of your, the rest of the council know, our new tennis company started. Um, there were some growing pains at the beginning, in particular with the pickleball players. Um, but they had a meeting with um, many and or most of them on Saturday and apparently it went very well. And we received an email earlier saying, hey, it was great, great meeting and seemed to address all of our concerns. So we'll keep going and see how we go from there.
Wonderful, that's good news. I think um, you're right that there's some growing pains there that'll be ironed out from, you know, everyone wants this to be successful. Okay, so um, let's start with our vice mayor.
Uh, thank you to everybody for the spirited debate and happy Father's Day to all the fathers.
Councilman Vasquez?
Um, yeah, a couple of things. So over the last, I want to say three or four weeks, I've been reaching out to residents that I know, you know, folks at church and so forth and so on. And I started uh, telling them about this um, ordinance that we're talking about, the staggered or not, that, you know, putting bugs in people's ears, and it kind of ran two to one in favor of some changes. But then I also had conversations with folks about the Abraham track. And that was like talking about the, the last rocket that left to go to Mars or something, no idea. And so that got me thinking because we're, we're spending uh, quite a bit of uh, resources in in a project to develop that area. And and I'm wondering if at some point, and this is something I wanted to talk to Heidi about at, at the end of the meeting, if, if this is part of Miami Springs, shouldn't it have a name? You know, that folks can wrap their heads around, just like when we talk about the bird section, you know, people know when we talk about one section of the city or another. So anyway, that's on my frying pan for, for conversations. Um, and and we'll, and we'll come back to that. Um, um, as the mayor and councilmen and team were able to attend the police gala. First of all, there were a number of them, starting with the chief, who mentioned how well the EB Hotel staff treated them from the beginning conversations to getting everything done. And by the way, the place looked great. I mean, I never seen that room in particular. So that's a, you know, kind of a kudos to to the hotel and and their staff. And then I had a conversation with Lieutenant Castillo and Lieutenant Castillo, um, we had a conversation. He brought those new officers to our Memorial Day event. And afterwards, he came over and said, I want to introduce you and met all the police officers. I tell you, they look younger that day than they did here tonight. And that was, it was great to meet them. But uh, Lieutenant Castillo said he wants to support um, our Memorial Day and Veterans Day events by also bringing a uh, a policeman's honor guard to our event and have a helicopter fly over, some other things he had in mind. I said, hey, we're open to whatever possibilities can be done. So I was very, very uh, very happy uh, to hear him say that and I reminded him that we'll, we'll, we'll be talking, uh, we'll be talking soon. And uh, and then lastly, um, a couple of years ago, I don't play golf, but I know folks who do. And there is an organization here in, in South uh, in South Florida, in Spanish, it's Profesa, they're the Puerto Rican professionals organization. They came to our golf course a couple of years ago. And I am on there chatting and I said, hey, when are you guys doing this? You know, come in, come and look at our, what we've done. And anyway, to make a long story short, with JC, we connected them and they're gonna do their tournament on October 28th. Right here in Miami Springs again, so happy to get them back and drum up whatever business we can.
Thank you, Councilman.
Thank you. Councilwoman? Um, I just want to say congratulations to the six officers that were sworn in today. I feel very blessed. I feel very blessed and privileged that they they want to serve our city amongst a lot of cities to to choose from. Um, I also want to thank uh Lieutenant Matt Castillo and his organizing of of the gala. I I was, I had RSVP to go, but I came down with an eye condition and I and I couldn't go. Uh, for the sake of everybody, I stayed home. Um, it's just kind of rewarding to, I grew up here. Lieutenant Matt Castillo grew up here too, his brother Robert, we all went to elementary together and and to see now that we're all kind of like contributing our time in our own ways is pretty cool. Um, and I hope to see that more in um, in the future with with our little ones running around here in the city. Um, I'm grateful for my council, I'm grateful for my residents. Um, we did have the little ironing hiccups of the tennis courts, but I really love the fact that our residents emailed us with a feedback. I mean, we can't correct anything without it. So please, whether it's good feedback um or negative feedback, we need it. We're not perfect and um, you perfect the city because we're doing this to to meet your needs. Um, other than that, uh, thank you for all who attended to the gala representation of the city. You all looked very charming once again. You guys cleaned up really well. I'm really jealous, I couldn't, you know, dash it all up myself, but anyways. I'm sure there'll be more times to do that and that's it. Have a good night and happy Father's Day to all the fathers out there.
Thank you, Councilman Centine.
Well, first start thanking uh my colleagues here at the this uh for a great meeting. And to say that I'm looking forward to a calm weekend is an understatement after this weekend. But uh, it was a lot of fun between the senior prom, which was really fun. And then we headed over to the Police Gala and then on Saturday, topping off, uh, we had the other League of Cities Gala that uh, to say that I was on the uh doghouse, it was my wife's birthday that day, that I was going to a government function. It was an understatement, but thank God that they had a great band. She loves to dance and we had uh the mayor and her husband Lloyd and uh Councilman Fayette and Adriana, who also loves to dance. And we closed down the place and I got out of the doghouse pretty quick, so thank you.
Okay, thank you all for um, a very productive meeting as always. Um, I think we really uh, work well together because ultimately all of us have the best interest of our community um at heart. Um, I just wanted to reiterate, the senior prom was so much fun. I passed by there first before heading to the the Police Awards Dinner and um Tammy and her staff did an amazing job. They even had, you know, the light with prom with, you know, that you take the pictures and there was a photo booth. Um, and Commissioner Cabrera had had uh loaned or sponsored a photo booth. Um, there was a a DJ, everyone was dressed up, it was wonderful, a lot of fun and it was a senior prom. What a great idea. Um, the Police Awards Gala, I think we've all said, um, very, very impressive, is a beautiful event. And um, you know, I was really taken by um our, the officers, the lieutenants, the sergeants, everyone that spoke. How well spoken they were um at what they were talking about, you know, of of our community, of their responsibilities of uh, just uh, very, very impressed. And um, the Miami Dade League of Cities Gala is always, the annual gala is always a wonderful opportunity to um be with other elected officials from all over Miami Dade County and that's, that was a lot of fun and it was fun, dancing and everything. I just want to uh mention to anyone who wants to be, you know, our parade, our Fourth of July parade is just a slice of Americano. You know, there's no other way to describe it and you can either be in it or you can watch it. It's basically the same, you know, as much fun to do either thing, but if anyone wants to be in the parade, be sure to reach out to um Caitlin at our Recreation Department and register your vehicle or your truck or your marching band or whatever. You plan to be so. The what? Car of card, whatever, um, to be in the parade. Um, and with that, um, happy Father's Day to everyone. This meeting is.
Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Mayor.